And you get to pick. On the Thursday, because when I half time them, it was worth my day.
I just, I started three years ago. Whenever he had broke.
That right, yeah.
When she, she brought me in and I felt bad because they're like, you know, bums there. What?
Yeah.
I got this.
Yeah. Good call tonight.
I'm going to call to order tonight's Borough of Morrisville Borough Council meeting for February 18th, 2020. Can we all stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Here. Council Dow.
Here.
Council Drive. Council Law here.
Here.
Council Ted Moore.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. At the agenda meeting, we had the Borough Engineer here and they discussed the comprehensive grant program. As far as I know, there's nothing else for this evening. So five is public comment. I'd like to remind you that you have three minutes after you say your name and address.
Andrew Lubin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Andrew Lubin, 624 Crown Streets. It's my pleasure to chat with you again. I have two things, one of which is a small, easy one, probably from Mr. Mitchell, if you don't mind. Bring in mind, Mr. Parker, your mention to me of two weeks ago, last week.
Not just, I just want to clear up on that. It was just to prevent people from calling out council members and trying to embarrass them and getting off track. Public comment is for comment.
But if I can't turn around and make a joke, have it, this just no fun.
You absolutely can, but I just wanted to clarify that so that everybody understood.
It was understood at the time, not.
It wasn't meant to take away from anybody's ability.
Mr. Mitchell, I think last week I asked a question that was probably too vague. So let me try to refine it down. My concern, or my neighbor's concern, is that if one of Chief McClay's excellent officers calls at 0100, 0130 because there's an issue, does he have a phone number of a code officer to come out there and witness the violation? Or does he have to turn and report through channels and Monday or Tuesday, somebody sees it and says, oh, I wish I was there? Can CODO actually come out on the spot on a Friday or Saturday night and see the violation?
They can. We've actually been out there various hours of the day, night, and oh, dark 30 in the morning, myself included. But they can also just as easily note it in a police report because the code department gets the police report usually next business day. And they can act on whatever the police officer observed and noted in his report. So there's really no need for a further after-hours response by the code enforcement.
Great. The reason I ask, and I'm not here to tell anybody how you do the jobs, I just hope that hopefully things will get done. My concern is that thinking back to the issues with the, with the party house, the paper trail seemed to need, seems to need to require people on the spot at whatever hour seeing the violations, that paper trails aren't quite good enough.
No, paper trail is important. And it's been well done, in my view.
Great, okay.
It started a little late. I had encouraged them to take more proactive action earlier, but they eventually did. They did a formal complaint letter in writing. They circulated a neighborhood petition, so.
I'm happy to do the same if anybody wants me to do that.
Feel free.
Okay, fair enough. Good, we'll do that. One other thing, I see on the agenda, there's a car show on May 16th, or proposed car show. I happen to be the member, the president of British Cars of Bucks County. Triumphs, MGBs, mini, the real Mini Coopers, not these knockoffs we see today. More pertinent to say, Mr. Paul, our generation than some of you younger people. But if you want a British Car Club to come down with eight or 10 or 15 cars, whoever at Morrisville Business can, you know, we're happy to cooperate, could help out, happy to get involved.
Well, the ambassador for the Morrisville Business Association is right there. I think it's with the Bucks County Stangs this year. But certainly, I'm, I'm sure they would consider other events or other groups in the future if you want to exchange information.
We would definitely do that. Great.
And if I may, if I may. Are you doing the Rotary Clubs this coming year, like you did last year?
They haven't asked us. I've called them twice, we haven't heard back.
Okay.
I don't even know they're having one.
It's the same day.
Okay.
Just so you know, so it's in its infancy, so they may be reaching out to you as well.
I called them twice. I helped them raise about $9,000 last year. Apparently that wasn't enough, so they haven't called back. So I'm more than happy to throw my hat in with Morrisville.
Okay.
How's that for easy? Good, good. Then thank you for the time.
Thanks. Regina Wallace.
Hello. Regina Wallace, 137 South Delmore Avenue, a lifetime resident of Morrisville. So I've seen this town go from a graduating class of 130 to what we have today. And I'm coming to speak about the business part of our town. Seems like most of our business is on Falls Township, and we need to build, build something here. We can't, we can't have more residents. We really need to build our tax base on our businesses. So what I'd like to say is, I'd like to admit, I was intrigued by the Williamson Park project. It was bringing businesses into our community, in our borough. However, after listening to Debbie Colgan and two other residents talk about the geographic layout of the park, I'm, I am thinking the park can be upgraded, but that wasn't the right plan. We need to keep that park. We can't have any more floods in our town. I've been through three of them, two of them really bad. My kids have been one. We don't need that anymore. So I started thinking, how can we get businesses into our borough? The next space I can think of to use is, that could use a facelift, is Bridge Street and Pennsylvania Avenue. We have our beautiful statue, that gorgeous Stockholm building that I remember was Prior's Pharmacy with an old-fashioned elevator inside, and the Morrisville Bank. My first checking account came from that bank, and I think almost everybody who's ever lived in this town loves that building. If we can get something started in this intersection, it could spread towards Delmore Avenue, towards Burns Pharmacy, and then towards the canal. It just takes one business. We could go to Williamson Park for an event and then walk to a restaurant two blocks away at the center of town. We can do so much, we have a walking town. So one possibility I thought of, where do we start? One idea is, I don't know of zoning and guidelines yet. I can learn that if I'm given the opportunity. But could we find a source for the Morrisville Bank? Is it possible to find a small business, a Starbucks, a small, we don't need another ice cream store, we don't need another nail salon, we don't need another cigarette store, but some other small business that's not food-related, that would share the space inside the Morrisville Bank, somehow preserve all of that beautiful woodwork, the beautiful building that it is, but kind of sublet it into having multiple businesses move in there? You need one thing, and then you'll see the Stockholm building build up, and you'll see the nail salons go, and we could see other businesses come in that aren't competing, and another Italian restaurant, another pizza shop, another, I love my pizza shops. But we need to start thinking outside the box. And I think that intersection has so much potential that we, you start there and it can spread over the next 20 years and build our business base down in our town. One final comment. I'm tired of hearing, why do we do improvement when it gets destroyed by Trenton? And I don't mean to pick on Trenton, but we hear it. I've heard it all my life. If we live in fear of what we build is going to be theft and destroyed, we will never have what our town deserves. Theft and destruction is in every town. We just need to ride above, rise above it and build our town the way we want to see it built. We need to stop living in fear of that and just do what we want for our town. And that's it. Thank you.
Want to address the Stockholm Building?
Sure. I can tell you that the Stockholm Building is presently with the Redevelopment Authority and the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Bucks. They have not taken possession at this time, but that is in the offing. And that will be, RFPs will be issued at an appropriate time for redevelopment plans for that property. As for the bank building, I can tell you that a number of parties have been in and through that building for a multitude of different concepts. But as far as I know, no one has signed the dotted line yet. So I'd rather not reveal who all has been looking around at it. Jane Berger.
Good evening. Jane Berger, 90 West Maple Avenue. First, I see in the agenda, the motion to terminate the police office on legal difficulties. I'm kind of surprised with legal councils so far that so close to the officer's court date, you would want to move for termination unless that's been changed again. I know theoretically in this country, we are innocent until proven guilty, so we would wait till it's in court. Other reason I'm here is because at the last meeting, when the, a good presentation about the school violence prevention grant was shared, Ms. Dorleter Berry Johnson spoke, and my heart went out to her when she talked about the need for this to come through the borough because the school district was not eligible. And I'm here to say that that information provided to her in the administration was factually incorrect. At the school board meeting, when it was announced and when it came to the borough administration, it had also been told they were not eligible to apply, and they did not have the three-digit number, therefore it had to go through the borough. Department of Justice site, this is the grant notice, it's very clear in the very front, bold letters, that school districts are eligible. This was filed electronically in Section 2, eligibility, agency eligibility. Also speaks to school districts being eligible. And there's a question that had to be answered whether you were law enforcement or non-law enforcement. So school districts were clearly eligible, and if you did not have that three-digit code, they would assign one to you. So those two reasons were incorrect. And I would hope that whoever I know that was signed by the mayor and the police chief was involved, the party to that might send an apology to the school district and Ms. Berry Johnson for conveying wrong information. It is a bit ironical because the grant talks about improving communication between the school district, the D's Department, and the Borough Council, which I truly hope happens. The content program for this grant is absolutely essential for the safety of our schoolchildren, so that is not my issue. It was a wrong or misleading or incorrect information being provided and not giving the school district the opportunity for discussion to apply for it. I do have the list of 103 entities that were awarded. Of that, 91 were various school entities, school board districts, they apply differently. Six were government, city, tribal, or county, two sheriffs, and three municipal police departments. So I'll share this information with you because I do believe in documenting what I say.
Thank you. Leave it go.
If you want.
I might be misremembering from the presenter's remarks. I think, if I remember correctly, the challenge may have been the fact that to include Holy Trinity in the process, the applicant couldn't be the school district and had to be the municipality. But I might be misremembering.
That's accurate.
Is that correct? Okay. So I, I think that's the reason why it was structured the way it was structured. But don't quote me on that. John, are we on video? Or we'll have to do a take two. Everybody has to repeat everything you said before.
Okay. Moving on from public comment, we have approval of the minutes. 6A is approval of the minutes for the Borough Council regular meeting of November 18th, 2019. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to abstain.
I need to abstain as well.
Anybody else abstaining? Six, six?
I'm abstaining because I was not on council at the time.
Ditto.
Go for four of the members.
Yeah. I think Mr. Robinson and Mr. Paul need to abstain as well.
Yeah, we have to abstain, we weren't on council.
May I make a comment, Mr. Parker?
Sure. It's my understanding that when a council member votes on minutes, this is kind of a unique situation. It's just like if you were sick while you're on council and you missed a monthly meeting. It was explained to me by a past solicitor that you don't have to be present to vote because you could have, you could have reviewed the film. There's numerous reasons, but you're voting on, the way it was explained to me is, that is how you believe the minutes are. So, I mean, there's certainly, I'm not saying not to abstain, but I don't think being present is a requirement to vote on minutes is how it was.
I agree with the mayor, but if, if it makes you happier for us to abstain, it's fine with me, too.
Absolutely.
And do you have a quorum?
We don't have a quorum, then.
You have four?
Yep.
So we have four in favor and four abstentions?
Yeah, I mean, you could have, it's not really a.
Can I ask the borough solicitor whether you agree with the mayor's position or with the president's?
To some extent, however, if you, A, were not on, and B, did not review those minutes, then an abstention would be proper. You know, if you're on council and you miss a meeting and you, and you review it for any number of reasons throughout the year, you know, you reviewed what happened, you bring yourself up to speed, and then you're competent to vote on that. But if you weren't there, didn't review it, and didn't actually have any involvement or know what went on, then it would be more prudent to not vote on, on such a motion.
All right. How about this solicitor? We postpone it until next month. Allow those council members who weren't present for it to review both the video and the minutes, and then bring it to a vote again.
That would be fine.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
I could review them, but how would I know if that was correct if I didn't? I mean, I have to view them first, physically view them, and then.
You would be able to review the video as well as.
As well as verbiage.
Review the minutes.
And technically.
Can we approach this a different way, Mr. Solicitor? Is it possible that for purposes of approving these minutes, that the quorum can be based on those people that were?
Well, I think it, yeah. It's a quorum of, essentially of everyone who was there. Or really, only one of you would have to do it.
I mean, if, if the holdovers all agree, can we move this on? Can we approve the minutes?
Yeah. Again, it's, it's just approval of minutes, so it's not too, too serious of an issue, but.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
I, I did not view them, nor was I here, so that's why I'm saying no. But if one of the other four actually saw it and can vote yes, then maybe we can go that route.
Mr. Parker, can I make another suggestion?
Sure.
If the four people aren't comfortable voting, vote no. The four people can vote yes, if they're going to vote yes, and the mayor can break the tie and either approve them or not approve them.
It's not really a.
It would be a tie, though.
It's not really a. It's not really a legislative issue that would go to the mayor, is it?
So shall we dock it for March? Yes, please.
Oh, my.
We're also going to do the same with 6D, Mr. President, so you don't even need to call that one.
Which one?
6D. We haven't distributed those minutes to you yet, so.
So you're pulling that?
Yes.
So we don't need to table 6A? We're just taking it off?
We're withdrawing it, yeah.
We're withdrawing it after a second?
We need to table.
Stay asking.
I'm confirming, sir.
Well, yeah, you can, you can move the table it, and then.
Well, then.
We moved the table, all right. We need a motion to table.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Do a roll call for that, Virginia, please.
Council Dow.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Law.
Yes.
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 Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Sherlock?
Yes.
Yes.
Table pass is 8-0. Move on to 6B. Biannual Reorganization Meeting of January 6th, 2020. Can I have a second for a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'm sorry, first.
Second, if you needed it.
Yes.
Okay.
We have a, we have a move and a second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's 8-0. What? Need an abstention? Or no? You weren't? Oh, it was 8-0.
Well, same issue, but it.
She can vote on it. Okay. All right, so 8-0, sorry. Just trying to avoid. All right, 6C. Need approval of the minutes for the Borough Council Agenda Meeting of January 14th, 2020. Can I have a motion?
I moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? 8-0. 6D has been pulled, not ready yet. We're going to move on to 7 Finance, 7A is the Treasurer's Report. Everybody had a copy of that. We're moving on to 7, well, any discussion on it? Well, we're out there. Move on to 7B, a call for a motion to approve the bill list and pay bills. Have a motion, please?
I moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Parker?
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions on our legal bills. First, for Mr. Flagler. I was reviewing your invoices, and one of them notes, emails with Borough Manager's Office, "Review of Council Meeting Video for 1/21/20 Meeting and Draft Disclosure of Conflict of Interest." Is there anything you can comment on that? Are we going to be getting a memo, or? It was part of the minutes of that meeting. A council member abstained and had to fill out the conflict of interest form. For 0.8 hours of legal review? Seems like a lot.
It's not, it's not broken out like that.
It's not in front of you.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, I think there was a.
Oh, 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 no, I, I know what you're talking about. Yes, correct.
I'm not sure if that was you or not, but.
Correct. There was an issue with the abstention. So we watched the video, prepared that, just did a little research on the issue, and then, and then had that council member execute the, execute the, the abstention memo, or certification, whatever you want to call it.
And if I remember correctly, the conflict was disclosed publicly at the meeting as part of the vote. Okay. So you're saying he executed a form? Do we have a form, like, for council to fill out in the future? Is it something? Yeah, it's not the first time we've had to use it. It's a standard form, and it gets attached to the minutes of that meeting. Okay. Next question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Justin.
Sorry, I got about three or four more. Oh, my. There's something in here for "Review, Revise, and Edit Resolution Establishing Policy for Receiving Public Comment at Meetings." Is this a policy change we're going to be seeing? This was not a policy change. This was a cleanup of an error in your public comment policy. But if it's a change, won't council have to vote on it? No. How come? Because it was correcting a typographical error. Okay. All right. Thanks. Another charge I saw on here for is "Legal Research and Draft Memorandum Concerning the Removal of an Appointed Officer." Sorry, say that again? "Legal Research and Draft Memorandum Concerning the Removal of an Appointed Officer." I have to look into that one. I don't recall off the top of my head what that was. Okay. And then I have another one, and Scott, this is probably going to be for you because it's from Sienna's invoice. But there's a whole bunch of charges and a couple hundred dollars for a receipt and review of letter from manager re-chief's ordinance. And there's a number of mentions of a chief's ordinance. Does something, ordinance of chief's proposing, or is this an ordinance for the chief? No, this is part of our effort that we started last year to create job descriptions for all full-time borough employees, of which we are done except for one, and that is the position of chief of police. Okay. So that'll be coming before us at some point to vote on? It will. All right. If council wishes to entertain it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Since we're referencing Flagler at this time, I do have a question on the General Ledger 2001, $11,000. There were actually three legal fees listed, and I was just wondering, it actually came to $7,500. Do you know what they were for? They're three separate invoices. But if you don't have the answer tonight...
I don't have the answer tonight. It could have been, some may have been for escrow accounts.
Having read those today, I can comment on that. One was the monthly invoice for general services, one was for the escrow account of Britton, and one was for the escrow account of McGrath.
But I think the escrow account is separate, which was another question I had regarding, what is the relationship between Britton and Flagler Associates? Why are they both listed on the same line under the escrow account?
Because Britton Industries has an escrow account set up at the Borough, and when our professionals do work related to their business, it gets billed to them through their escrow.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's also at a much, it's a non-reduced rate as well.
Yes, they don't get the government discounted rate that we enjoy from our law firm. They pay full freight.
Okay.
But you might also be looking, quite often, the legal bills are split across multiple funds.
Well, two of the invoice numbers are back-to-back.
Okay.
So they were, one was $2,700, one was $1,300, and the other is $3,400. So we're just hoping it wasn't for one month worth of work that we're not being reimbursed for. So, that's my question. So we'll find out.
Yeah, we'll find out and let you know. I also believe some of that was from December.
It looked like two months' worth of bills.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a couple of the questions. On the General Ledger 2001, but 10970, it lists that we have insurance for this, the school resource officer, $75. I was just wondering why, since the resource officer hasn't been there in many months, are we still obligated to pay his insurance? Like, what is that all about?
Well, that could have been a closeout item from when he was still the SRO, or we may have been charging other things to that line as well.
Which we shouldn't, right?
Well, we can charge anything to any line that makes sense. Sure.
Okay, but if we don't have a school resource officer anymore, I think we should maybe change the line.
Stop using that line, or change the name to something else. Is that the one that I'm remembering? Micah, do you have that handy?
It's on page six, in the first, first General Ledger. I did have a question about the Capital Reserve. We have, what is it, Edmonds and Associates? And I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with these, that's why I'm sorry to take up your time, but...
Oh, that's all right.
Edmonds and Associates and Tracer?
Yes.
Now, is that regarding our new system programming?
Yep.
So forth? Okay. So, and then, so when we do that, I'd like to see that we have, in a couple locations here, we have listed as historic summer seat improvements. We don't own summer seat, and I think we should, I think we should label it appropriately, Patriots Park, or whatever else we're doing instead of a summer seat, because it's not really, summer seat does not belong to us. I think we should have the proper title.
Yeah, I think the problem with that is that started before you guys named Patriots Park. Patriots Park actually wasn't even you guys, it was previous council. And we had to keep the grant language consistent, so it's always been referred to as the Accessibility Project at Historic Summer Seat. But now that it's over, we'll probably never have to use that terminology again.
So I'm just thinking, if we're getting a new program, maybe we could just make sure that... I'd also like to ask about General Ledger 2001, that's the $11,000 number on page seven. It talks about training. Now, I don't know if this has to do with, because it says FD, but I thought that would be Fire Department, but maybe not. It's TD Card Services, which I'm assuming is our TD Bank card.
Yes.
But it says Training FD, it's $425. The only thing that makes me think it's police is underneath it it says Special Equipment.
Do you have that handy, Micah? I believe it was Police Department Chief. Are you having a recollection? Yeah.
I'm sorry? Oh, just for... Thank you.
Training FD is just a name of the account line.
Oh, okay. And what's the FD?
Maybe it's Fund.
Well, 1/29/20, it says, I mean, to 1/30. Like, there's no, the receipt date was 1/17, maybe that helps. Okay. But I got the answer, so it's okay. And then also, I saw Habitat for Humanity has an escrow, but don't they have multiple homes going up right now, or no? And if they do, shouldn't they have an escrow for each?
No, they have one escrow with us as a builder, and it's used for all of their projects here.
But is there more than one being done right now? I thought that's what the paper...
I believe they only have one in the works right now. The other three are completed.
Okay. I have a question under the police report. Should I wait for the chief? But it's about reimbursement lines, so maybe...
No, go ahead, you're on our roll.
The police report, it was reimbursement programs, it's like $15,000. So is that insurance reimbursements, or drug reimbursements? I mean, it's in his report. I mean, I don't know if that's a typo or not. Does that sound familiar to anybody? Police report? The monthly police report that we just got recently? You know, with, the one with... Yeah. I'm sorry. Oh, just, well, I was general, I'm sorry. Like, three-quarters way down on the left.
The only reimbursement I can think of would be crossing guards.
Second page.
Crossing guards from the school district and Holy Trinity.
Okay, thank you. Answered.
So, getting back to that credit card chief, what was the $425 spent on? Training? Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't hear that part, thanks.
I was also wondering if, does our emergency management person have fire keys for our, like, Toll Brothers, or does, I mean, is our fire marshal, fire chief, used to have a fire key? They were called fire keys? I'm not sure who would hold it, that's why I'm asking. Okay. Okay, so it would be the fire chief that would have fire keys for those large, like Toll Brothers and Bridge Commission and so forth? Okay. Well, good, you don't have to worry about that, then.
It's, Mr. President, Nancy, were you talking about keys, like, what kind of keys?
Sometimes there are, like, lockbox keys that are specific for the fire department in larger properties and buildings.
Yeah, most of them have knockboxes.
They have those boxes, and then we have, like, the fire, they have the keys inside that box.
Right.
Like, when you saw your house, and you have the little one you hang on your door?
Right.
They're mounted to the wall, yeah, like, lots of buildings have them.
And most of the larger commercial ones, though.
This might be the last question, I'm sorry. I saw that the Robert Morris electric bill was $67 for the month, which I think is quite large. Is that something that you also split up amongst other reports?
That's the one for the Plaza?
For the Plaza.
That sounds like it might be more than one month combined. Can you, it's for two months? Yeah, it's for two months.
Two months? Okay, so when we get to February, I guess we're going to have, like, single-month figures? Is that how, I'm just asking, I don't really know. So, like, next month? No, that's okay. But we normally would pay monthly, though, right? That's why I'm asking. Right.
Not all of our vendors are always timely about meeting our AP cutoff, and if they don't meet the AP cutoff, they don't get paid until the next month.
Okay. Well, thank you for your indulgence. That's, I have a couple more that can wait. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Budget worried about 60 bucks.
Virginia, roll call, please. Yes.
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 Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
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 Pass is 8-0. Moving on to eight reports. 8A is the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The canal cleanup. I've been getting ready for the 2020 Canal Cleanup, which will be April 4, beginning at 9:00 a.m. Anyone wishing to help out, we meet at the canal across from Burns Pharmacy on Union Street. On February 14, I sent a canal cleanup flyer to the Borough. I'm sure the information will be soon on the calendar and the public access channel as I request it. The topic of the staff study, it's my understanding from Chief McClay that that's completed, and that next month there'll be a presentation made at the monthly meeting. And after that, I believe, at that point, we can probably disseminate that. And if I got that wrong, I'm sure George will let us know. Last month, I asked for a little bit more transparency and cooperation and communication. Examples were the chief of police not receiving the legal bills, the phone bills, et cetera. I'm still...
Mr. Mayor, can you speak up a little bit, stuff to hear?
I'm doing the best I can, I have a cold, apologize. And I don't blame him for moving away, because I think I actually got it from the solicitor last week. Not this one, though.
Dave, can you pull the microphone down? We have this fan blowing up here, and it's incredibly hard to hear down here.
And again, I'm sorry about that, Scott. I have a cold, but I'll try. I was going to ask about the search for professional services, but I see that's on the agenda, so I like seeing that's moving forward. Let's see. Lastly, I'd like to mention and remind the council that a month ago, I sent in a memo, and I hope everyone received it and looked at it. It's about strengthening the noise ordinance. The chief and I do believe that that'll help with the nuisance properties, and perhaps council can move on that and strengthen what we have now, because if you look at the noise ordinance that Morrisville has, it's not real strong. In fact, sometimes they use the zoning parts of it to help, because if, like, an R1 neighborhood has the time zone. So we gave everyone a copy of Bristol Borough's ordinance, and you might be able to pull some good points out of that to help. And since I have no voice left, I think I'll call it quits. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to 8B, the police chief's report.
Good evening, all. Your agenda tonight, the New York City Trenton Half Marathon is May 9, not May 8, if you want to correct that. This East Coast Greenway ride, is there any police services needed for that?
Any police services?
Actually, I thought they were already in touch with you, but if they get approval tonight, they will be in touch with you.
So that means they need police?
I don't think they do, but if they feel they do, they can work that out with you.
All right, I never heard anything from them, just to let you know. Okay, today I attended the formal arraignment of Dominique and Shayna Decree in Doylestown. They pled not guilty at this point. The scheduled trial is June 8. It'll be a scheduled trial, or what I think is going to be a plea, and it'll be a sentencing date. At least that's what we hope, at least that's what I hope. 80% of our officers have completed the annual municipal police officers training. Some of the training that we're going to be receiving this year is street survival, internal affairs investigations, advanced search and seizure, investigating and preventing crimes against the elderly, which I'm going to talk about in a few minutes, the Glock armor class, advanced DUI classes, FBI leadership and command classes, which were two, we got two scholarships of $500 apiece for 695 classes, so they're only going to cost us $195. So there are some of the things, I know we have problems with our grants going on, but there are some of the things that take place without a grant or a vote from the council. Emergency management, Ms. Sherlock was speaking about that tonight. Matt and I will be attending an advanced emergency class out in Coatesville next month. After that class, I will receive the professional level certificate for EMC, which is the highest level for a Borough manager. Matt will be almost getting to that same level, so by the time I get ready to retire, he'll be able to step into my shoes. We order our ballistic vest for the department. We're five years, I very much remember five years ago, and we had talked about that. It's time for, every five years we have to replace them. We will receive half the money back from the ballistic vest grant from the United States government.
Chief, who is Matt? You said Matt?
Matt, he's your fire chief.
Oh, Matt.
Matt. He's your assistant emergency manager. Scams against the elderly have been a chronic problem throughout the United States, and we have quite a few going on through our Borough. So if anybody has an older person out there, it's time to listen up. They are getting taken advantage of very badly. In the last three months, we've lost over a half a million dollars that older people have been taking advantage of. We've made two arrests, one out in Chicago with the FBI, actually one arrest, one with the FBI out there. We recovered $30,000 from a house on Delmore a few weeks back, where a lady got a phone call in Ohio saying that her grandchild was kidnapped. So she put all the money in a box and sent it to an address on Delmore. We were able to intercept that box, and we were able to go and take it to the bank and get a check and send it back to the family. We got lucky on that one. They got lucky. But there are so many scams out there right now, and I just want to put some hints out there. I just did a lecture up at the Presbyterian Church. It was supposed to be a 20-minute lecture, it ended up being an hour and 20 minutes. We really got into the really crunks of all these scams that are going on. But I just want to put some hints out there to people. The FBI, the Social Security, the Shires, the IRS will not call you. They will not call you, but they will have people on scams that'll call you and ask you to go and purchase Walmart gift certificates, Amazon gift certificates, green dot cards, and mail them to them. Or they'll scam you on your bank accounts, which we just had another one today of $50,000, and send cash in the mail to people. Please talk to your elderly. Never send cash in the mail, no matter what. You think it's a stamp, there you go, who would ever do that? It's happening. It's happening, it's happening a lot. Try to set something up with your bank that you need two people to sign for large amounts of cash withdrawal. If you get a ransom phone call, everybody hear about these? Old grandmother gets a phone call, your grandchild, we have him in custody, you got to send bail money, or we've kidnapped him. Do not send cash, call the police. If you think something's strange, it is. Call us, call relative, don't send money. The chances of someone ever being kidnapped in the United States is very, very, very slim. And there's questions that you can ask somebody, you know? What kind of car does my grandchild drive? They don't know that, they didn't kidnap your child, okay? We're asking to put them on the phone. All right, call relative, don't send money. Like I said, we cleared the one in Chicago, we didn't get any money back. All the money's going to India or Iran, but at least we were able to arrest somebody. So please, if anybody has any questions about scams, please call Police Department. It's really getting out of control, and our old people are really getting taken advantage of. So if you have an old person that you're related to, your mom, your dad, set something up with them, talk to them about the money that's being sent out to people and ca... up with them, talk to them about the money that's being sent out to people in cash. Now, it's silly to send cash, but the older people, they take advantage of them because older people never think that somebody's trying to take advantage of them. And our folks are. So I think that is it for this week.
Hey, George, I have a question for you. Tonight, it was brought up about having code come out to the nuisance properties. Were you given a name and phone number? Because I didn't see that in any emails.
No, if there is something set up for that, I'd be more than happy to put that out to my officers. We'll put it out to police radio so they have that, but we don't.
Mr. Parker?
Yes?
If it's not already on there, is there a way we could just have a message on our, actually on our website as well as on our channel, station, just about the scams and just a little blurb from the chief?
I could put something together and give it to you as a slide. Also, everybody, I think everybody got a little email this week about FEMA classes? Anybody get emails about FEMA classes?
No.
I don't think so. You know what? Again, my voice, would you remind them about the NIMS training?
That's what I'm talking about. Everybody on council should take these FEMA classes. There's only three classes, they're not hard, but to be eligible for money in case of disaster, everybody on council had to take this class. So please take it.
Are you going to send the email to us?
I sent it to the borough manager.
Okay.
So I was hoping he was going to send it out to you about that. But- Mr. Bowers mentioned, did I hear that right, that there was a charge through the lawyer to figure out a job description for the chief of police?
Yes.
How hard is that? We're not, we're not, please don't send money to our lawyers to ask them for such things like that. I will gladly give you a job description for the chief of police.
It's for them to draft an ordinance.
Doesn't mean it, no.
It'll be circulated. We just got it.
But do you need a job description for the chief?
Yes.
Would you like me to forward one to you, or?
No, we're good for now, thanks. But when we circulate the draft, feel free to make edits or suggestions.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Chief, you'd mentioned that you did a presentation at the Presbyterian Church.
Yes.
Do you have any plans to do one at the senior center?
They've never asked me, but I would if they asked me. They called me and asked me if I would put together a presentation, but if you'd like me to, if you know, I can do that.
I think it'd be good to reach out to them.
Okay.
That would be the best place, I think, to start.
Could also do it at the Towers.
Because that's what he's-
No, I meant the senior service center.
The senior center, yeah. I could, either both of them.
But the Towers are great, too.
Yeah.
Tuesday's a good day for the senior center. They go there for lunch.
Oh, during the day, okay. That's even better.
Yeah, like noonish.
I'm sure you can get free lunch out of that, too.
I was up there till 10 o'clock that night up there. I couldn't get away from them. You know, they're wonderful people, and they took away a lot from it. You know, they were really amazed at what things people do. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to eight C, the junior councilperson's report.
Mr. Parker, can I make a comment real quick regarding scams before she starts, since it's fresh in my mind? Over the last couple of years, council has been the subject of some scams with emails. People will go online, use a fake email address, but make it look like it's coming from somebody from council, and they'll email another council member asking if you're there or available. So just beware of that, especially the new council members. Since your name and email address are out there on the web, people will try to use it to scam you.
Thank you.
Yes, I just actually got a phishing email through our council email today, so just be careful.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Exactly.
Last meeting, my report introduced a survey I administered to teens about life in Morrisville. This past month, I repeated that poll with another pool of teens, as well as administered a second poll that focuses on the experience Morrisville teens have had with three topics: school, the news, and politics. I'd like to take some time to share notable responses. The responses to the first survey followed the same trend as the last time I administered it. Most respondents praised the small, tight-knit community feeling and special places to hang out, especially outdoors in the park and near the river. Areas for improvement included the quality of schooling, a wish for less crime, and one survey noted ignorance amongst Morrisville youth, but they did not elaborate further. My second poll went into depth about teens' thoughts on their own experience at school. When asked to rank their experience on a scale of one to five, with one being very poor and five being excellent, the median ranking was a three, with all rankings represented. I asked respondents to elaborate if they answered one or five, and the respondent who ranked their experience as a one complained of a lack of control in academic settings. The respondent who answered a five said that they've had a good time at school. I then asked teens what the most stressful part of their school experience has been thus far. The vast majority responded by saying that expectations around schoolwork caused the most stress, with one respondent naming bullying as the main cause. The second half of my survey was to gauge how familiar teens in Morrisville are with local and national politics. I asked respondents to rank how familiar they were generally with Marshall Borough's government on a scale of one to five, with one being not at all familiar and five being very familiar. No respondent ranked their familiarity with either a four or a five, and half ranked their familiarity as a one, being not at all familiar. I then asked respondents to rank how closely they had been following recent United States politics on a scale of one to five, with one being not following at all and five being following very closely. Two-thirds of respondents answered with a four or a five, and one-third answered with a one, meaning that the majority of teens have in some way followed United States politics recently. There does not seem to be a clear correlation between familiarity with local politics and national politics, as two respondents answered with not familiar to local government while following national politics very closely, meaning that for local government in Marshall Borough, they ranked their familiarity as not at all familiar, but they ranked themselves as a five for following national politics. If these two were to be treated as exceptions, a common trend was that responses were usually similar for both local and national politics on an individual basis. My final question was about news consumption. 50% of respondents consumed their news through social media, and another 50% answered that they consume international, national, and local news equally. Other news sources included news apps such as Apple News and Television News. No respondents answered that they don't follow the news at all. With all this data in mind, I'm looking to address the fact that many Morrisville teens seem to be unfamiliar with Morrisville Borough government and processes despite having a wide variety of valuable input and a desire to see change in their community. A useful tool going forward will definitely be using social media, backed up by its popularity as a means of communication, and as evidenced by this survey, news consumption. I'm looking forward to not only acting as a voice, but also finding and sharing ways that teens can enact change in Morrisville. Thank you.
Nice.
I have a question.
All right.
If you go back to the, in the beginning, when you spoke about the school, one of the, I guess, one of the respondents said that they felt that there was a lack of control in the academic classes.
Yeah.
So these are-
These are high school age.
But the lack of control is their lack of control or the control in the classroom?
Yeah, they didn't elaborate further, but I believe, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I think that they were implying at the teacher's part, but I don't want to put any words into their mouth. They didn't really elaborate any further than that.
Thank you.
What was your, what was your sample size?
My sample size was about eight students. It's kind of hard to reach a large group of students. My apologies. I'm looking to expanding my sample size going forward, but for right now, I'm trying to stick with more manageable data sets. So if there are any recommendations that you have, for me, I would really appreciate them. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I just have a comment. I think some of the school-related stuff, make sure you're sharing that with the school administration as well.
Okay.
Because as borough council, we don't oversee the schools or anything.
Okay.
But I think you're doing a great job. I love hearing the data.
Very good job.
Thank you.
And I have a suggestion. If you, if your friends don't have any place to hang out, they can come to the council meeting. Get familiar with local politics.
I will let them, I will let them know. Thank you.
That's an attractive offer. Thank you again.
I think her study showed that no one wants to come here.
That concludes the reports. We're going to move on to nine action items. Nine A, call for a motion authorizing the borough engineer to solicit bids for the 2020 road repaving project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I have one question. We spoke about professionals and looking at new bids and so forth, but wouldn't this be considered a new project? And we had said that we weren't going to do new projects until after that point.
I don't remember saying that. I'll follow.
Well, I mean, we did say that we were keeping our professionals for anything that's already open.
This is to solicit bids.
Right.
So this is to solicit bids for an outside company to do work.
But it's our borough engineer, our current borough-
To solicit, the engineer puts the proposal out to solicit bids.
Right. But we have to pay him to do that, though, right?
Or you could delay the project. That's true. But it's not work that the engineer specifically is doing to pave the road, since obviously-
I do understand that.
-doesn't do that, right?
Yeah.
But it's just to put it out there. Since it's February, you kind of want to-
Start.
-get on it.
They've done 85% of the work already.
Right.
In the design.
So it's really a continuing project, though?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then, then it fits into the, into the narrative that we talked about. Okay. Thank you.
And the bid is only going to be up to the amount, the dollar amount in the budget, correct?
Well, the bids are going to be what the bids are, and when we find out what the cost is, we will have to trim the work to meet the bid.
Okay, perfect.
If I may?
Head.
So, Scott, knowing that in the past, when we've had issues with our budget from a, from a general fund perspective, that historically monies were borrowed from this specific fund to cover salaries and so forth. With the addition of the salaries that we're adding to the general fund, do you foresee us being able to even spend as much as what's in the budget? Reason I'm asking is because we do know that, you know, handful of years ago, we literally ran out of money, not just in, we ran out of money in our account. And I think from the years that I've been watching, obviously, we put it back before the audit, but that money had to be in our account for checks to clear. Are we going to run into that problem at the end of this year?
Well, there's a whole lot of issues there.
Sure.
First, let me clarify, if council remembers, I forget if it was last year or the year before, we actually had to replenish-
Yeah.
-the liquid fuels fund from the general fund because it was not done prior to an audit, and it was caught in an audit. I think that predated me from a previous year. But to answer your question, we will not be certainly, I will not be allowing our fixed costs for anything non-qualified as a liquid fuels expenditure to be run through liquid fuels.
Okay, thank you.
Or even our own street fund for that matter, which council could technically borrow from our own street fund and replenish later, but I don't think that'll be necessary either.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a quick question. At the last meeting, I think the figure we had was, was it 278, 278,000? I didn't bring that with me. I'm sorry. Does anybody remember about that?
The engineer's estimate of probable construction cost is 322, 526.
What was our?
We're short 160,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Ed, Virginia, roll call, please.
One question before the roll call. That shortage that you're talking about, Scott, when was that part of the, your recommended 6.6 millage increase last year to cover that?
Actually, I recommended a 5.5% increase in the special millage funds. Part of that was for our street fund, which, yes, would have contributed to this.
So we're starting behind the eight ball, then, effectively?
Yes, but that seems to be the theme around here.
So Scott, do you think it would be better to wait till next year and just put the both street paving on hold this year due to the fund?
I don't, because we're trying to coordinate two streets along with Penn Dot, Penn Dot's intention to repave Bridge Street. So if not for that and the fact that we were, you know, we already have the bid specifications ready, I probably would have said perhaps wait a year, but I don't think we can at this point. We're too far in, so I think we should just see it through. And we'll have to trim work from the scope of work based on what the bid's coming at, so.
I just want to comment, I agree with you to put it out now, because if we wait a year, costs escalate every year. It will be going up probably at least 3% in construction costs from this year to next year if we wait. So if it's 3% less, we would get done.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
I also don't think Melvin Avenue should wait another moment, but if of the four, if we have to, I said, I don't think Melvin Avenue should wait another moment.
I agree with you.
But if there's, you know, if there's something we can trim back, or if we have to eliminate one of those, then so be it, I suppose.
Anyone else? Only once. Virginia, please, roll call.
Councilwoman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Daison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherwood?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Passes eight zero. And nine B is a call for a motion to approve the Morrisville Business Association-sponsored car show to be held on Saturday, May 16th, from 3:00 p.m. to, from, sorry, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on each East Bridge Street between Delmore and Pennsylvania avenues.
Mr. President, before everybody clamors to move this, the NBA has reminded us that they need about an hour, this is the event time, three to seven. They need a little time in the beginning for setup, a little time at the end for cleanup, so it's probably 2:00 until 7:30-ish.
Seven.
Yeah, so just if whoever makes the motion could incorporate setup time into the motion, we would appreciate it.
So-
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
From Saturday, May 16th, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m.
That'll be good.
Yes. Is that okay? It's a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't do any discussion. Was there any discussion? None? Okay, so, everybody said aye. It's eight zero, it passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nine C, a call for a motion to approve the New York City Run's Trenton Half Marathon to be held Saturday, May 9th. That was a change per the chief. From 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., pending Pennsylvania Department of Transportation special event permit approval.
Smooth. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes eight zero. Nine D, call for a motion to approve the East Coast Greenway Ride to be held on Saturday, May 17th, from 8:45 a.m. to 10:45 a.m. with a rest stop in Williamson Park, pending certificate of insurance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Parker, you did say Saturday, but it's Sunday.
Sorry.
Is that correct?
It's Sunday, yes.
The date's right? Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes eight zero. Nine E, a call for a motion to change council meeting dates and re-advertises necessary.
Now, you could take up nine E, or you could wait and discuss it under 11, because it's on here twice. We've had a couple of different requests for this, so. Now, you could take up 9E or you could wait and discuss it under 11 because it's on here twice. We've had a couple of different requests for this, so. It's up to you on where you want to deal with it.
So then we'll just remove this and we'll discuss it under new business. Moving on to board and commission appointments. Environmental Advisory Council has a one three-year appointment to expire on December 19th, 2022. We have a letter of interest from Mr. Stephen Fowler. Would anybody like to nominate?
I'd like to nominate Stephen Fowler for this position, please.
My second.
We have a nomination and a second. Do we have any others? Do we have any others? Last time. Anyone else? All right. Virginia, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Dowars?
Yes.
Councilwoman Daisa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Law?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ball?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scherlock?
Yes.
And Councilwoman. Yes. 8-0, congratulations, Mr. Fowler. Moving on to 10, which is unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business?
I do. I know that in one of the prior meetings, we had discussed doing the truck study for the first ward. And I had reached out to both Steve Santisaro and Perry Warren and had a discussion with them. The last study that was done was actually part of a stretch of road that is from Yardley into Morrisville, and it was really to detour the trucks. So this study that I discussed with them was to put a light and/or a stop sign up, and they were receptive to the idea. So they had mentioned that, they actually had a couple suggestions. They said that the borough manager should reach out to Penn Dot, which would be a free study that would happen. They also mentioned that any kind of stoplight that would have to go off would have to be paid for and that they would be willing to look for things that would help us pay for these things should the study prove to be approved. So one of the other things that they had said was, and Chief, maybe you, I don't know if I have to make a motion up here to get it approved, but that they said that Yardley borrows from Lower Makefield in order to do truck enforcement. So they said that maybe we should look into doing truck enforcement down in the ward. So if you could put together kind of a study about the hours and when the trucks are the most active and maybe to hire a part-time truck enforcement, I get it that everyone on council has to agree to that. Is that possible to do? Or do I have to make a motion to have that done?
Mr. Parker, don't we have a truck enforcement officer on the streets?
No.
Sure we do. Sure we do. On a part-time basis, we do.
We do.
So who's out there and back hiring part-time that allows him to work, just do trucks, but it's not on a, it's not every day.
So it's part-time now, our truck enforcement officer?
Yeah, I was under the impression that he was taken off of truck enforcement in order to.
Last year, I think.
Do a shift. That was my impression.
I'm sorry. He was taken off truck enforcement a year ago. He was taken off of truck enforcement a year ago when they laid off Gary Zappano. They brought Gary Zappano back. And what I'm doing now is Gary's taking his spot and I'm hiring the next part-time guy to cover the street. So, but it's not every day. It's when I, you know, it's costing me $200, $300 a shift to cover those 12 hours for him.
Right. So if you could, if you could get us some information about when the busy times are and how many hours we would need, perhaps we can advertise for a part-time truck enforcement in addition.
I have one. Why would I bring someone in?
Because you just, you just said it costs $200 to have him do that.
Right. So we're going to spend that from somebody else. So if I bring Lower Makefield in, their officer charges about $60 or $70 an hour. As compared to bringing a part-time, one of my part-time officers, then it costs me $25 an hour.
Right.
How many hours a week is Bo actually doing truck enforcement?
It's different every week.
How many hours average is he doing?
I can't tell you that. It might be one day this week, it might be two days next week. He works, you know, it depends on how I get part-timers to come in. And I got to also be cognizant of my budget.
So when he's working, when he's doing trucks, how many, so how many officers are on patrol when he is, when he's actually?
Two.
So we have him working doing trucks and you have a?
Two officers on the street.
Two officers on the street.
Right. Because I can't, I can't have him crawl up underneath trucks and then have respond to an emergency.
Right. Well, I understand, but here's, here's what Helen was trying to say when we're talking about a part-time truck enforcement officer. Bo is a full-time officer. So I don't think he's taking a reduction in pay. So what the, you've got a, so we're paying three full-time officers to work?
No.
How much, is Bo a full-time officer?
Yes.
And when Bo's doing trucks, you have two officers on the street?
I said I'm bringing a part-time officer in.
Okay.
To cover while he's doing trucks.
Okay. But we don't know when he's doing trucks. It's, could be one day a week, could be two days a week.
Correct. But it's better than what, better than what it was before where we had zero.
And my question is, why was it zero if we could backfill with a part-timer now? Why couldn't we then?
Because it would have been a problem with your Harrisburg. You couldn't lay off an officer and then fill in.
We already had the part-time officer, sir.
Don't shake your head at me, please, if you don't know what the law is.
I do.
We would have ended up being in Harrisburg for a violation. You cannot lay somebody off and bring a part-timer in to take his spot.
You can't bring two part-timers in to fill that spot.
You can't bring in one part-timer to do it.
We already had part-timers on staff, correct? You wouldn't have been hiring a new part-timer. We already had them on staff, correct?
That doesn't matter. You're taking, you're filling spots. That would have been for a full-time employee. You cannot do that.
George, I think everyone remembers the trouble we had filling the streets as it was with the 30-hour rule and everything else at that time.
There was so many things going on, but if you want to ask your solicitor that, I'd be more than happy to say whether I'm right or wrong. You cannot fill a full-time spot with part-timers. It's against the collective bargaining agreement. So.
But he would have still been a full-timer, right? He just would have been doing something else, right?
Who's he?
Bo.
Bo was doing something else. He was taken off trucks and put on, back with the patrol.
So he was put back on patrol, right?
Right. Because you laid off a full-time police officer.
So he would have still been a full-time officer. There would have been availability to have a third officer on those shifts as a part-timer, correct?
No. You cannot do that.
You're taking an officer, if I understand right, Chief, you're taking an officer who was removed from truck, from truck enforcement, back into regular rotation, and the violation would occur if you took him out of the regular rotation and put him back to his, to an assignment as truck enforcement and then backfilled that full-time position with a part-timer. That's what, yeah, it is, it is a violation.
But it wouldn't have been.
It's a collective bargaining agreement violation.
It was. We sat here with the lawyers.
You guys can overtalk me, but however, what I'm saying is you wouldn't have been hiring a new full-time, a new part-time officer. You had six on file already. To go and hire part-timers to cover for full-timers is another story. If you already have those part-timers and they have the availability to work shifts, we could have had our full-timer working full-time hours and doing truck enforcement part of the time while there was an additional part-time officer patrolling. I've already actually looked into this.
And we've mentioned month after month back then that we could not get the part-timers to come to work.
That's a different story.
Well, that's where you, they were not available.
Excuse me.
But they're going to be available now.
Even if we had part-timers available, you were not allowed to take a part-time employee, even though they're already on staff, and fill a full-time spot. That is illegal.
It's a shift. They'd be filling a shift, not a full-time spot. That full-timer would still be out on the road as well, correct?
You can't do it even if you're just doing it one day a week. Please don't shake your head at me. Go back to your attorney and ask your attorney what the law is.
Mr. Parker.
We went through this for a whole year. If I would have been able to do it, I would have done it. But we would have ended up in Harrisburg. You're not an attorney, sir, and neither am I.
That's correct.
But we paid for one, and I advise you to please ask him that. We went through this for a whole year. And now you're going to argue with me after you laid off the officer? You're the one that created that issue, not me.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Can we get off this subject for now?
Please.
And move on to, no disrespect, Chief.
No, I'm fine, man.
I understand that there's a difference of opinion here, but I think we're going back to how many hours is our, is our truck enforcement on the street? And I think that that's.
Actually, we're going, if we go back even further, we're talking about Ms. LaHole here, who is, brought up some solutions for the issues that are in the first ward.
And I'd like to make some comments on that. Probably two years ago, our borough manager, and I believe our, it might have been a little longer than two years ago, and our code enforcer, we're down there at Philadelphia and Pennsylvania Avenue, watching the trucks and writing, timing them, seeing how many are going through. And I knew that there were 60 going south and 90 going north within, I believe it was a 45 minute to an hour. And we did do, we had rotation of different people in the borough in the first ward, sitting at corners and at the ramps, making a list of the truck names, the times they were coming, the direction they were coming, and the times that they were going back, and the directions they were going. And all that information was given to Perry Warren. And we were told that's all we could get was the sign at Philadelphia Avenue. And also, you're speaking about putting a traffic light or a stop sign down there. Do you really want trucks idling in front of people's homes? I live a half a block from Pennsylvania and Philadelphia Avenue. I certainly would not want to smell that exhaust all day long. It's bad enough we have to do it while they're driving through.
Well, to do it, first thing to do, to fix this problem.
We're not going to fix it.
I realize that the residents are looking out for their, for their neighborhood, but a group of residents with clipboards standing on the corner and writing down what they see is, is not a study.
They also came in and did a study.
And what were, what were the results of that study?
Results is the sign that's up there on the pole at Philadelphia and Pennsylvania Avenue, which is unenforceable.
Yes.
That is all we were able to get.
But this is, but this is.
It was on the state.
But we're bringing, we're, we're, we're back at square one right now. So what we need to do is we need to, we need to bark back up that tree. We reach out to Perry, we reach out to Steve Santisaro, and maybe we'll have a different outcome this time. Maybe some, maybe we can do something to alleviate.
Hopefully, it won't be a traffic light or a stop sign because that's one thing we don't need.
You live on Harrison Avenue. If you're, if there was a traffic light put in at Post Road, and you're going to sit here and tell me, you're going to smell truck exhaust in your house on Harrison Road?
People that's lived there, you know?
You're out of your mind.
All right, all right.
There's people that live on Pennsylvania Avenue.
I live on Pennsylvania Avenue. Trucks go by my house.
I want to add something.
Trucks don't go by your house.
All right. One second, mayor. Just let me, all right.
Idiot.
A traffic, traffic light or a stop sign is a traffic control device. It's meant to slow things down and allow pedestrians across traffic to go through. I also stood there for about 45 minutes and watched, on average, one truck, and this was about 10:00 AM, one truck per minute pass through there, traveling far in excess of the speed limit, which is 30 miles an hour along that stretch. It's just a tragedy waiting to happen that some young kid or an adult or a senior citizen going to the senior center steps out and gets run over by a tractor trailer doing 40-plus miles an hour down that street. So I actually met with Senator Steve Santisaro last week and spoke about the idea of a traffic control device, whatever Penn Dot would agree to. Restricting trucks on that roadway is not an option. Penn Dot will not do it. That was made very clear. And I explained that the suggestion was to slow down traffic, possibly to the point where it became a restriction on trucks and they would turn right on Philadelphia like we want them to do.
That's what they're supposed to do.
Or go down Tyburn instead of coming up through Morrisville.
Mr. Parker?
The mayor wants to go.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that there's been numerous traffic studies. I mean, I've been up here, I guess, 14 years continuously. This is not a new subject. I commend the two of you for bringing it up. But what was said tonight, and I echo a lot of what Mr. Parker said about the things happening in Eileen, the last study was very exciting until we got to the bottom line where it described the signs, that they're advisory, not regulatory. And when people tell you up here that they're not, Penn Dot's not going to stop the traffic, they're not gonna, I mean, we could ask them, you don't need to send a chief to do a traffic study. There's been numerous traffic. And believe me, Penn Dot has copies, the state reps have copies. And I love that we're trying to find a solution, but I don't know what the answer is, but I just wanted to echo that these things have been tried.
Right. But this is not to stop the trucks from coming. This is to want them to go and take another route because it is not advantageous for them to go, continue to going down Pennsylvania Avenue.
Mr. Parker?
May I say something, please? Can we just let Ms. Sherlock go real quick?
I'm going to try not to repeat what everybody has already said, but if you talk about studies, you can go back to the 1998 study when we actually took them to court and we lost. They said that the trucks, actually, they pay taxes. It's a state highway, and we can't stop them. So that's one thing we can sit up here and all agree with. I don't see Penn Dot doing anything different. The only thing I do see is possibly, again, is a deterrent, and the deterrent would be a code, I keep saying code, it would be a truck enforcement person there. It's, and you can't stop them from going, but it might be a deterrent. They might, they might slow down, thinking they're going to get a ticket. They might try to, and that little sign is, is almost pathetic, I think, really. It should be something a little more substantial. But I, I mean, I don't necessarily.
After the study was done, if everybody remembers right, I put my sign out there, said, please turn right on Philadelphia Avenue. I got a call from Steve Santisaro saying, George, take the sign down. You're not allowed to do that. So we tried to get him to go to the right, but that was when we were doing the blue sign compared to the white sign. And so I, we couldn't even do that. We tried. We tried to get him to go off Philadelphia Avenue.
Well, this isn't to get them to go off Philadelphia Avenue. This is to create a hindrance for them to not want to go down Pennsylvania Avenue.
Watch, watch how you say that.
The businesses are down South Pennsylvania Avenue.
Anytime you want to jump in here, counselor.
You want to put one at Post Road, I, at least.
You can't, you can't say you're creating a hindrance for them. Okay? And most of the trucks that go down there do go down there 30, 35 miles an hour. And most of the trucks are very, very legal and are very safe. There are very few bad trucks out there anymore. There's very few trucks that are overweight because they know how bad the fines are. You just have a lot of truck traffic. And, you know, you, you can't take, you can't say we're going to create a hindrance for this certain group, or we're going to end up in federal court. So.
Well, I have to disagree with you. Those trucks are speeding down Pennsylvania Avenue. I pull out of my street, they're slamming on their brakes.
35 miles an hour on an 18-wheeler.
It's 30 miles an hour. That's the speed limit there.
30 miles an hour on an 18-wheeler looks like 100 miles an hour.
I pull out and they're behind me, so I know how fast they're going.
As soon as, as soon as the state passes that we're allowed to use radar, well, that'll be the first street we do. Until then, we can't. I mean, I can go down there, I'll paint white lines on them, and we can start timing. We can do that very, you know, very soon. And I'll try, I'll try that for you. But you're going, you're going to see that it's not going to be the speed. Because remember, they have to go 10 miles an hour over the speed limit for us to be able to stop them for that. So that means they got to do 40. So I'll talk to John later, and we'll get white lines painted down there that we can do timing.
Oh, that would be great.
But I really don't feel that that's going to be effective, but we will try it.
Chief? Mr. Parker, one other solution? Is it possible that we could put that, the large sign, actually in Falls, get their permission as they're coming into town? With their, you know, slow down, speed limit, enforcement, whatever?
I can move wherever we want to, but I'm not real comfortable.
So at least when they're coming out?
Well, the speed limit in Falls is much higher, so that's the problem. They're already going 40 miles an hour, and then they hit Morrisville, and they just continue doing that instead of slowing down.
In front of Straskon, you're saying it's 40, and then as soon as they go over Post Road-
It might even be 45, and I'd have to go by again.
Do you know, chief?
No, I don't, I don't know what it is on the other side of the line.
And you can't just issue a ticket at the speed sign where it drops down, you have to give the vehicles, I forget the footage off the top of my head.
The yards or something.
Yeah, the slow down, which PennDOT informed me about.
I mean, I could move my sign from up there at the firehouse, but then I got all the people up there to complain about the speed coming down.
Buy another sign.
Buy another sign?
I'm just joking.
Please write the check, I'll go buy another one, that was free.
Yes, well, I-
If we can get, maybe you can talk to the senator about getting another sign like we have up at the firehouse, and permanently put it down there.
That sign in front of the firehouse, when I drive by it, if, the last, I mean, if, after, after you go by it several times, and it just, you really don't pay attention to it anymore. But I noticed that it had fastened seatbelts on it. That's a campaign that's 20 years old.
Yeah.
So if it's, if it's helping keep this, if it's helping keep the speed down, or if the neighbors are complaining, I haven't heard anybody complain. If that sign, nobody's, nobody's complained about it, that, there's already one on the street, on, by Franklin, that, the little radar thing that shows you your speed. If you have the one sitting in front of the firehouse that-
So if you go over 35 miles an hour, it comes up, slow down.
Which, which side?
The one up there at the firehouse.
The one on the wheels.
Yeah.
The one on the chowder.
Chowder.
Okay.
Yeah, that comes up. So if you go over 35, it comes up, slow down.
Oh, you're saying people are complaining if you were to move that sign?
No, I'm saying people are complaining about the speed, about people doing, not doing the speed limit down there.
If he moves it.
I mean, that was-
If you move it.
Oh, if I move, but I mean, but there's something, if you want to talk to the senator about, about getting another one of those, you know, we can permanently put it down at Post Road.
I actually like the sign you have on the pole. People actually slow down with that.
Yeah, I can put, you know-
How much, how much, I know we only have, we have two officers on at a time, how much of that time is dedicated towards speed control?
I can't give you, I thought the time ahead, I can't give you that answer.
It could be-
Well, I know we're doing the best with, with what we have, but, growing up, I always, always remembered that speed zone by Holy Trinity, right down from my house.
Scott, you just said to me that nobody's complaining to you about it.
Say again?
You just said to me, nobody's complaining to you about-
No, I said, nobody would complain if you moved that side from the, if you moved the side from the firehouse.
Oh yeah, I bet you they would.
Would they really?
But there, there is a, something attached to the-
Okay, but I'm just giving you a suggestion.
Yeah, but I'm saying that-
If you want something that might help us, rather than putting a stoplight up, ask them if they can get the money from PMA for another one of those to put down there, and I can permanently put one down there.
Right, but don't you have a, the small little box in the second ward also? I think it's on the corner of, not Palmer.
They're solar, they're the solar ones, right?
Franklin, that's the one I mentioned, it just displays your speed.
So there's Franklin.
I have one on North Pennsylvania, and I have one coming in the borough-
On Bridge.
Down here on Bridge Street. So I can buy another one, they're $2,500, and put one down there. That's why I try to use that other speed limit sign up down there, but with the horrible weather we've been having, it doesn't hold a charge.
I know this has probably been brought up to you before, and again, I'm not in law enforcement, so I don't know if it would work, but being a motorist, I know it works. Do people see a patrol car, they automatically hit their brakes? We have cars that sit out here that, I know there's different cars that get rotated and whatnot.
Park one down there.
I'm a UPS driver, I've been all over the place. Route 9 in Old Bridge, there's, there's empty cop cars parked all over Route 9, and people slow down.
And you know that, don't you?
Say again?
You know that, don't you?
At the second time, if I go by and look, but the first time I go by, I slow down.
Newtown Township does that up on the bypass. I know exactly where they sit the car.
I've never seen one on the bypass.
Yeah, I've seen that.
All right, I'm, it's, it's only effective one time. So as soon as you go out there, these trucks that you have going up and down there, are the same trucks you have every day.
Right.
So I put an empty car out there, they're going to go, "Oh, there's the empty car."
You put an empty car out, then next day you move it. How long does it take to move a car?
It doesn't, but I'm just saying, I don't think it's going to be effective.
Have we tried it?
Only time I tried is at Christmas time, I put an empty car up at the shopping center. That's the only time I do that, because I don't think it's effective. Can I do it?
Mr. Parker?
I'll throw a car out there, it doesn't-
I really want to move on, we have a lot of the agenda up.
Well, that's what I was going to suggest, and maybe we can get back to getting either one or two of the, you know, the solar ones, or the ones that tell you the, the speed you're, you're running, right there, Post Road, maybe?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to them again.
Maybe you could talk to them again.
I'll bring this up again.
Perfect.
There's got to be a solution.
Yeah.
Okay. Still under unfinished business, right?
Yes.
Last week I mentioned about the, George, about the stuff going on down the park in the, in the summertime, down with the dyke. Mr. President, what do we have to do to get, with just no parking signs? No parking signs, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, April to November. Maybe five of them down there, along the stretch of Park Avenue, no parking on this side of the street. What do I have to do? Make a motion? Talk to John?
We have to-
Create an ordinance, right?
Create an ordinance.
Right. Mr.?
Scott, I brought this up the other day downstairs, please, please guide me, what do you want me to do?
Well, you, you can make a motion, and if council supports the idea, we will order the signs and draft the ordinance, and away we go.
Okay.
Okay, before we, Mr. Parker, before we take that route, you're going to have signs down there, and you're going to have people that have their family come over, friends come over, and they'll have nowhere to park. I think a better suggestion could possibly be that you have a parking permit for the people that live on that street.
I, I mentioned that to Scott last week, I said I would personally deliver them to each house on that street. I will go down and knock on the doors and hand them out.
And however many cars they have in the home, I mean, it's done all over communities and neighborhoods, and I think we should try that first, so as not to inconvenience. And if the car doesn't have a permit on it, gets a ticket or towed, or whatever else you want to do after that.
But when all the family members come over for the party, the odds are they're not going to have the parking permit on it.
Well, not all of them.
So they're going to get a ticket anyway.
You could offer one or two for visitors, as well as the-
We'd have to allow a certain period of time for parking without a permit, for people to visit people, conduct ordinary business and that, you just can't make it 100% restrictive, not on a public thoroughfare.
And it's not all day, it's similar to what they do at the school, no parking on Hamilton Boulevard or Palmer during school hours, during the school day.
Then the permit can have a time on it. It's just a sticker in the car, it's a car sticker. Just a thought.
Mr. President?
Are we doing the sign thing, the permit thing, both, neither, I don't know?
Mr. President, if I may, can these things be pushed down to the policy committee, assuming we have one?
Seems like it would be policy and/or ordinance, right?
Yeah, I guess, I guess it could go to policy.
Because then it could be spoken about ad nauseam for an hour straight, and, and a lot could be hashed out that we're taking up solicitor time and everything else for.
And it can be discussed to do, to come to a consensus on what we would ask the solicitor to draft. We're not going to, the council members aren't going to draft an ordinance, but it could be discussed.
Just remind everybody that even though it is a public street, it's still a borough street, and we still have ownership over the borough as to how-
We do, and I was, and I've talked to those neighbors down there, and they've, they've had it up to here with the summertime-
We do, we do have ownership over it, but to make permits without the ability for somebody who's delivering from Burns Pharmacy, or delivering food, to walk to a house and not be fearful that they're going to get a ticket, there has to be an amount of time that they can pull into the zone to, to park and conduct business and then leave. That, that has, that's, whether we own the street or not, that, that's irrelevant.
Well, that would be common sense portion of the, of the-
Right, exactly.
Of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I think, I think the suggestion of trying to push, pushing this down to the policy committee is a good one. I mean, I think to undertake a permit program is a major step. It's got lots of ramifications that we need to work through, plus the cost of enforcement and things like that.
Exactly.
This is not really, it's, it's not developed enough for us to decide tonight from this dais, and I think that it's going to take a lot more research and working with the borough staff, et cetera. So can, I don't know if we have the policy committee in place yet, but we should, and we should give this to them as their first project.
How about we just do, can we do no parking signs for now? On that, that side of the street, on the dyke side of the street, 10:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning, April to November. What is so difficult about doing that?
Well, you would have to enact an ordinance, or the police cannot enforce it.
Okay.
And then you're going to have all the people just going to park on the other side of the street in front of the resident's house-
That's, that's the one-
And walk up to the dyke.
That's the one, that's the one issue. But some of the neighbors down there might go outside, and might shoo the person away. Might, the people down there have had it, they pick garbage up every weekend in the morning, they, one woman, Mary, I'm not going to give her house number, had to move her bedroom from the front of her house to the back of her house, because she couldn't sleep. There's people doing drugs down there, there's people having sex down there in their cars, add up on the dyke, they're leaving their garbage around, their music's turned up. The people on Park Avenue have had it. All I'm trying to do is try to help them out a little bit with their quality of life. That's it. It starts at night, it starts around midnight, 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the morning, the bars close, the same people tell me the same thing. If no one believes me, go down there and knock on a couple doors on Park Avenue, and they will tell you, "I have had it."
I don't know that no one believes you, Scott.
I'm not yelling.
Maybe that's another place for a dummy car.
Say again?
And maybe that's another place for a dummy car.
Now that you announce it, it's not going to work.
I don't think those people are watching our meeting.
But I think what Bob and what Mike are saying is the best course of action is to not knee-jerk and do something.
I have to agree with that.
Is to send it down to, and let somebody look into it, look into Bristol Borough, see what they do to curb parking in areas, look into New Hopes and the small boroughs and see how they do it to get rid of undesirable people.
Either way, it's all that enforcement.
We'll put no parking signs up, we'll make an ordinance and put a no parking sign up.
Because there are unintended consequences when you just knee-jerk and do a reaction. Incidentally, parking permits has been also suggested as a remedy for the party house problems we have in my area. And my inclination is, there's just too much baggage that goes with it, but if we can use it for Park Avenue, we can maybe use it for, in the party house situation as well. But it's something that you, it's going to require a lot more thorough research and preparation.
Yeah, see, I didn't, I was not a- Parking permits is-
Let's do it tonight, and let's just do it tomorrow.
Parking permits is, that, that could get complicated. That could, because even a parking permit will have 2020 on it, then in 2021, we have to do new parking permits, people are going to move, people are going to sell their car. If they're the ones you stick to the window, or you get the ones you clip onto the mirror, it falls off, it's, it's complicated. I, I don't see the problem with putting no parking signs up. If you look at our parking, our ordinances in the street, there's no parking on Pennsylvania Avenue by the cemetery. Did you know that? You're not allowed to park on Pennsylvania by the cemetery. I don't know why. If you're not allowed to park on Pennsylvania Avenue by the cemetery, okay, you're not, you're not waking any of the people up with your music in the middle of the night, trust me. And there's nothing across the street from it, except the grass field. So you can't park there, but you can't park, but you can't park on Park Avenue and just wreck the quality of life at, at, at night in the summertime. I don't get it. And any of you that are watching at home right now, I tried. I'm trying for you, thank you.
Do you want to know why there's no parking signs at the cemetery?
Yeah, I know why, probably because the Cloverleaf was open 30 years ago, and it's been a grass lot.
Exactly, and the trucks were parking on the grass above the curb, and they didn't want parking there.
I realize that.
They could probably take them down, but there's an ordinance now.
But there still is an ordinance, and that's what I'm saying. The ordinance, you can't park there, but you, but you can park on Park Avenue and wreck the quality of life.
Signs or permit, you still have a process, you still have to advertise an ordinance, you still have to write up the ordinance, so it's not something that can be done overnight.
It's February, it's going to start, it's going to start up again in May. We start now, we can get this done in, in three months, which-
I certainly empathize with them, Scott, but-
Say again?
I empathize with the people that are down there, I get it.
They don't care if we empathize, they want us to fix the problem.
I'm just trying to tell you that there, there are a number of other locations, including Pennsylvania Avenue with trucks, that the people have to adjust and put their bedroom in the back. At Bridge Street, Pennsylvania Avenue, I, I'm not saying that we want people to have to do that, but I am saying-
We can't control the trucks, we can control the parking down there. That's the difference.
And, and I think we will, but it's not going to be done overnight.
Okay, then this may fall on deaf ears, but I want to make a motion to purchase no parking signs, no parking, April to November, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, on the east side of Park Avenue, and have them stop, that's it. Scott, that's all I can do, that's my motion.
So you, you're making that motion for us to do that without the ordinance, to be able-
And create, and create an ordinance too, yeah.
You'll also have to have a public comment first, please.
Comment, yeah. Well, is it second?
Anybody second it?
Question first.
So just wanted to make a second.
All right, no second, so.
I tried. Mary, I tried.
Mr. President, if I may, interject and make a suggestion here. If you're tasking the policy committee with doing something, we could also ask them to look at the no parking on South Pennsylvania Avenue by the cemetery, and that's an ordinance that could probably be amended to lift that, if that's council's wish.
Mr. Parker, while I think that that might work today, since we know Cloverleaf is not there, but we're also talking about possible development down there, so I think that that might be short-sighted if we try to change that right now.
Right, I agree.
Maybe we should keep it.
Now, I think, until we decide what's happening to that land.
So we could put a pin in it for now and revisit it at a future date.
Right.
Mr. President, I would suggest, with Scott's enthusiasm, that he'd be on the policy committee so that he can move this forward.
I'm still waiting for enough letters, well, emails of interest for the, the committee, which I have yet to receive with just one.
I'll send you one tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Ed, can you, can you re-forward that email with the policies?
Sure. All right, moving on to 11, new business. 11A, a motion, call for a motion to move the Morrisville Borough Council business meetings to the fourth Thursday of the month, starting March 26, 2020. Have a motion and a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes. Last month, or last week, I should say, it was mentioned that change is good. Change is not always good. Sometimes it's better not to fix something that's not broken. I've sat in council, before I ran for council, I sat in the audience for over two decades, watching what was going on, paying attention, and the meetings were always scheduled, and they were always scheduled the same. I would hope that if anyone runs for council or puts a letter of intent in, that they would know when the meetings were, and were able to make the meetings, rather than try to change the meetings. I don't understand why someone would only take a seat less than a month and want to change the date of the meetings. There are boards, committees, and also other community organizations in the borough that people on council have to attend, or do attend. And I don't think it's right for all these other organizations to have to amend their meeting nights to accommodate the Morrisville Borough.
Mr. President, if I may?
Go ahead.
And I don't think it's right for all these other organizations to have to amend their meeting nights to accommodate the Morrisville Borough.
Mr. President, if I may?
Go ahead.
So this is gonna sound self-centered. I'm okay with that. I'll qualify in, in just a moment. So I'm not okay with the fourth Thursday of the month. And that sounds self-centered. It sounds like I'm just, you know, being cranky. But what it does is it conflicts with my involvement in a international organization that does a lot of good. It, it gets in the way of my ability to be fully committed and involved in their board meetings. And I'm not talking about, you know, hey, you know, we have an Easter egg hunt coming up. No, no, no. I'm talking about a, a group that does projects in the, in, in the borough, one of which we're working on currently is putting in some shelters for the bus stops in town to allow people that are taking the bus to not get drenched when it's raining. We're also working on a project to bring clean drinking water to a community in South America. So this isn't something that, that I'm just saying I'm being grumpy about and I don't want to change. That's not what it is for me. But what this does is this specific Thursday conflicts with my ability to be fully involved with that group, and that's a shame. I'm committed to being on Borough Council. I'm not leaving. So what you're really doing is you're taking away from, from other philanthropic efforts that I'm involved in, and that kind of sucks.
Mr. Parker, where, I'm just curious, where did this, the day come from? It's like, was it sort of just randomly picked or is there something that's not happening in the borough?
I believe it conflicted, it was one of the days that didn't conflict with anything on the, the borough calendar.
Mr. Parker, I'd like to comment. First, I have a question for Mr. Flager to confirm. Pennsylvania Borough Code requires the borough to hold a meeting every single month, correct? If I remember from my training?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So in doing so and moving the meeting to the, you know, fourth Monday of the month, it puts it very close to the end of the month. And for some reason, should we have a snowstorm? Should we have a, a great thunderstorm where we'd like to lose power, especially here at the municipal building, and we need to cancel a meeting? It does not give us very much option to be able to reschedule it and make that requirement.
First Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have five days for the rest of the month.
For that month. That doesn't include weekends and advertising. I mean, we have a certain amount of time that we need to advertise the meetings.
Correct.
So it just makes that more troublesome as well. And that's only in event if something goes wrong and we need to reschedule. But it's a factor to consider.
Mr. Parker, I have a question for Mr. Mitchell. How does this, how does this affect the, our billing cycle?
It'd be more concerning to me if we went earlier rather than later. Mr. Parker did ask me about this when he provided me with the date.
So like, the first Thursday's worse?
Yes.
What about second Thursday?
Even worse, yeah. Because we don't have accounts payable for billing cut off as a certain date. We do accounts payable one week. We do payroll the next week. So if we were to go any earlier in the month, it'd be fine with us, but I have a feeling it would frustrate council because you would be seeing a bill list and/or financial statements from a month prior than you're normally used to seeing them. It would cause us to be that far behind in what we present to you, so.
So really, the end of the month is better for...
Later is better for us. Quite frankly, we struggle sometimes to meet tonight's deadline because we have to have it out last Wednesday in your meeting packet. Sometimes that's a challenge, but I think there've only been two or three times when it's fallen to, to Friday. So we'll, we'll figure it out and accommodate council on whatever you want to do. I'm just telling you, you're, if you go earlier than what we already have, you're probably not gonna like what you're seeing from us, so.
So, and Wednesdays don't work for a number of us either?
Anyone else? Virginia, roll call.
So the motion's not changing. It's, it's the fourth Thursday, huh?
Is there another Thursday that works for anyone, the third Thursday?
No. The MMA uses the building.
Oh.
Yeah. Mr. Paul has a conflict. There's a conflict with this room, and I think there's a conflict for the solicitor on third Thursday.
Ed, Virginia?
Counselor, don't fix it.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes.
I'm gonna say yes.
No.
We have a tie.
Not very, this is a council issue. The council's gonna work it out. Remember, we're gonna work together. Humba ya.
We can discuss this some more. Try a revote.
Changed my mind.
Okay.
Or we could put it on for March and give people more time that you want.
Change one person.
Motion fails. Don't we just move on?
It doesn't fail. It's tied, which is a fail. All right. Okay, so we have to move on. 11B, a call for a motion to direct the borough manager to advertise all professional services. Can I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
You have a second? I'll second it. You have a motion and a second discussion?
What's the current policy?
Basically, it's the pleasure of council.
Right. We directed the borough manager to solicit. It's been a small pool that's responded to his solicitations, and we're just looking to advertise.
Can, can you speak up too, Mr. Parker? I'm sorry.
I said, the, the last motion we did was to have the borough manager solicit for professional services. As everyone sees in their Dropbox, it wasn't a very large number of responses. We were looking to get more responses, which is why we're asking to have the borough manager advertise.
Can I get a clarification what all professional services are? What do they include?
It would be solicitor, code enforcement, with zoning and UCC, as well as the engineer.
Is there any kind of setup to, to analyze whatever we would get in for these so that we're ranking and rating professional services rather than just randomly picking if we based on quality and, and, you know, ranked proposals and, you know, how they came in, how, if they, if we feel they could meet our needs, the quality of proposal, basically an evaluation of professional services based on merit?
Actually, there's an answer to that. And the answer would be to create an ad hoc committee to review all solicitations from professionals for our requests for professional services, come up with a recommendation or a ranking, and then present them to council via our Drop Boxes, and then discuss it at a meeting in the future.
Gabe?
No.
Into the microphone, please. Oh, it, what did you, I don't know what you asked.
I was just for clarification while I was writing. I wasn't sure if manager was mentioned.
That was my next question.
What was the answer?
No. It would be a repeat of the motion we made in January to solicit.
So the borough manager...
For professional services, which would be the solicitor, code enforcement, and engineer.
So the vote that we took in...
That was to solicit, yes.
It was just to solicit, wasn't it?
Not to advertise.
No, I'm talking about in January, when we had the reorganization, the vote we had for all these positions was just a temporary fix until you people all got in and situated, and now we're going to advertise, correct? If it's not broke, don't fix it. That's my opinion.
At that time, we did specify that those professionals would stay on with the current jobs that they might have already started.
I'd just like to say, I like the idea of the ad hoc committee to review and give recommendations to council.
I agree. I think that's how it should be done.
My, Mr. President, my question is, is the word "all." Are we gonna, this, this would require the borough manager to advertise all services? Is that what we want? Or do we want to authorize him to, to advertise in situations where it's, it's prudent? I mean, do, do we mean all? That's all I'm saying, all I'm asking.
The appointed, the appointed professionals by council.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I could tell you in the past that when professionals were looked at in the middle of a term or something a little different, I do recall basically a lot of resumes and, and other information coming in. And then the council actually didn't have a committee. They did a lot of interviews and they, they worked it out together. Because you may have some candidate that you really like, and he may not even make the top three list. And, you know, of course, this is all, you know, in theory, but you could have a professional that is well-known or a lot less hourly wages that doesn't even make the top 10 list. So I don't know if, I think all the council should be able to look at this, unless you're bombarded with hundreds of applications.
We wouldn't restrict, we wouldn't restrict the council from looking at the resumes for lack of a better term, but you, where you have all of them and then you have eight opinions on who's good, but nobody's actually spoken to them and asked questions. Council would be able to give the ad hoc committee questions that they have that they would like asked of all the services. You know, and it would give us the opportunity to interview them, ask them questions. I think, I just think that coming in and just cleaning the slate every two years needs to change. I mean, and, and there's nothing wrong with looking at professional services. It doesn't mean there'll be a change. Maybe we'll, maybe council as a body will decide the professionals we have or what we want, that there's nothing else out there that's any different. Maybe some will feel that maybe we do want to make a change. But if we don't look, then the incoming council members haven't had any input in a decision for the professionals that they want to represent them moving forward.
Yeah, well.
We're not looking at changing, you know, in year, year one and a half. We're looking at February of coming in in January on, I mean...
Well, I hope you didn't misunderstand me.
No, no, no.
I wasn't trying to advocate for a change or against a change. I could just remember years ago, people sitting right there and everyone interviewing them, and I, I'd just like to see a bigger process. That's just my opinion. I mean, you're gonna do, it's a council decision. I just would like to see a lot more people interviewing, narrowing it down your search is all.
Until it's advertised, you won't even have all your lists.
Right, we won't even know the number. I mean, we may get no more, no more, you know, interest in, in, you know, providing services here than we already have. So then it would be just the few that we have. But if we don't advertise, we won't know. And the cost of advertising is not prohibitive enough to, to at least do it. Anybody else? We have a, we have a motion. We have a second. Virginia, can you do a roll call?
Counselor Dowers?
Yes.
Counselor Driesbach?
No.
Counselor Malahal?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-1. 11C, a motion to authorize the borough manager to give Keystone Municipal Services the contractually required 60-day notice to terminate the contract. Can I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second discussion?
Is there a reason to terminate their contract?
I think because of the required 60-day notice.
No, but I'm saying, did they do something wrong? Did they do something illegal? Why are we terminating the contract, especially if we had not any discussions on an alternative to it?
Well, I think, I actually did an analysis on, on the invoices that were posted into the Dropbox, and I, I had some questions on some of their billing and invoices and the hours that they're spent. So for instance, in July, or I'm sorry, in June, they actually charged the borough $490 for a hazard mitigation workshop. I'm not sure why the borough would be paying for one of their employees to take that. There was another, and that was for seven hours. There was another charge in June for three hours where they created a spreadsheet for sidewalk inspection. Again, I don't know why the borough is being charged $195 for them to create a spreadsheet. So, so in looking at all the bills and, and trying to segregate them and put them into some kind of an order, it looks like the UCC building, they take about an hour to do in general, on average. Code enforcement takes about 20 minutes for them to do, and zoning takes 45 minutes to do. And also, the bills come out to be about $65,000 for the year at the UCC building inspections, $67,000 for code enforcement, and $46,000 for zoning. And if you break that down, it turns out to be 1.8 people per equivalent full-time hours, where the UCC is 0.6 of a person, code enforcement is 0.6 of a person, zoning is 0.4 of a person. And then they have the sidewalk project, which also costs us a good size of money, which I don't know if the council had approved that or not. So to me, to, to give all these services to one entity where they're billing us on hours that we really don't have a way to track, I would think that it would be good to look into and see if we can bring maybe code enforcement back in-house, maybe outsource the UCC, maybe outsource the zoning, and, and try to get something different. Because they did spend $228,000, they invoiced the borough, and that permit revenue of $189,000 came from the residents. And I think that's a lot of money to be charging for things when people want to try to improve their homes.
Isn't this a little premature if we just voted or just passed a motion to advertise?
Here you, was your mic on?
They just passed a motion to advertise for bids. So why would you jump to it right now of getting them a 60-day notice before you even get any bids in?
If I may, I, I'll, I'll agree with Eileen on this. It's, it's kind of putting the cart before the horse if there's no actual plan of who's gonna replace them to say, hey, 60 days to terminate. We may find that we can't do it in 60 days. Then we're gonna be without those services. And, and sure, we can bring in a, an individual to do code enforcement, but the UCCs, the zoning, I mean, there, there's a lot of stuff that's going on there that you need, that you can't just bring somebody in to do if they don't have the experience and trainings and, and in a lot of cases certifications. It's, it may not be as easy as it sounds to fill their, their shoes. I just, I think it's putting the cart before the horse if you're, if you're gonna make a decision like this before you have a plan of how you're gonna move forward. Thanks.
And Mr. President, I agree with Mr. Yeager and Ms. Dreisbach. I mean, I think there might be lots of good reasons to consider replacing Keystone, but I'd, I'd prefer seeing a little more analysis. I mean, there are a number of points that Helen made that are probably valid criticisms, but I'd like to see it in writing and be able to, you know, look at it and think about it rather than in one fell swoop, we hear about it, we're gonna knock them out and then hope that we find somebody in 60 days. I think that, that is a little premature.
Mr. Parker, may I ask the solicitor a question? All right, thank you. Regarding this motion 11C, it says about a 60-day notice. If, if this were to pass, would the council be able to rescind it if they decided they didn't find a candidate? So it's, I don't, I'm just trying to say, would that work if, if they decide, you know what, we did like them?
I'd have to, I'd have to double check the, the language of our contract with them, but once, once you give 60 days notice, I, I don't think you can just say, you know, it's my bad.
You terminated it, you're just waiting for the time to pass.
And Keystone would be free to, to move on as well.
And just to comment, you could do that, but Keystone's gonna take that 60 days, and they're gonna start looking for different clients to move their people to so that they have something lined up to keep those people employed. So when that 60 days comes around and you say, oops, sorry, we changed our mind, they may just back out anyway and say, we've, we've got another option, we're gonna follow.
Well, I, I kind of disagree with that. I think no matter what, they're always looking for clients.
All right. Mr., do you have anything?
I was just gonna say that they may still come and you may find that their rates are gonna be worse because they have a little bit more leverage.
Yep. I'd also like to comment too that as much as I love the data and the numbers, and I'd love to get into that and look at it, there's also the overall, you know, looking at the forest, you're looking at the trees. The forest is, we're getting, what, over a person, two people almost equivalent full-time for, over the last two years, with averages, it cost the borough $50,000 a year. That's not a bad deal to have a whole department of people. And you can adjust and have, you know, 40 hours of code enforcement one week and tend to next if you want. It gives you the option to, you know, bring in other zoning people for a different perspective if you want that. So it gives you more flexibility in the grand scheme of things, having a whole code enforcement department of multiple people. You're not relying on just one person. If you, you can get another company and we can look at that, that's, that would be, give us the same thing. Just note for $50,000 a year for a whole department, that's, we get the revenues and fees and code enforcement, the actual code enforcement going out and enforcing ordinances is never gonna be a moneymaker. It's always gonna cost the borough money. So we're always gonna have to pay for it. So to me, $50,000 a year is minimal as opposed to paying somebody salary benefits and then not having the flexibility you have with the company.
All right.
Can I just say one other thing?
Sure.
So I also looked at the Yardley Borough as how they are set up, and they have a part-time code enforcement coordinator, and then they have, they have outsourced their building code to one organization, and then there's a different organization to do their zoning.
That's what I was going to suggest. If the councilman who moved this and, and the councilwoman who seconded it would agree to withdraw it at this time and then add an 11F, which would be to direct the borough manager to advertise for a part-time code enforcement officer, that would give us another, another thing to look at.
Point of order.
Isn't that part of B, 11B?
Yeah, was code.
Where you were soliciting for professional services?
I don't believe so. I asked the borough manager and he did not feel that that was.
Mr. Parker, when I asked for clarification, it was said the solicitor, code, zoning and the engineer.
For professionals, not for an individual who would be a part, part-time employee.
Okay, it can be extracted out, okay.
And a point of order. We do have a second on this, so we would have to table it, correct?
Well, he just asked them to withdraw it.
I can withdraw it. Was I the one that motioned? I'll withdraw it.
Helen made the motion, Scott seconded it.
All right.
I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's been withdrawn. So is there any objections to withdrawing it? Okay, it's, you agreed to withdraw it?
Yeah.
Okay. So 11F we're adding at the end of this, if we ever get there tonight, would be to direct the borough manager to advertise for a part-time code enforcement officer. We'll open that when we get to it. So we're going to go on to 11D, which is a call for a motion to discontinue agenda meetings effective immediately. I have a motion and a second.
I'll motion that.
I'll second it to open it up to discussion, discussion.
Yes. This is a perfect example of why we need agenda meetings. We're adding things to the agenda at the last minute. We're discussing things forever and I don't think we should do away with them.
What else?
Just like to comment, I think I stated before, I like the agenda meetings. It gives you time to sit on things, find out more information before you vote on it. And I think the agenda meeting should be to set the agenda and discuss it. And the business meeting should be to vote on it and that we shouldn't have any new items on the agenda for the business meeting unless they are a true emergency.
If I may, I truly believe that it gives the residents time to chime in when things are brought up and discussed at the, at the agenda meeting. It gives them time to process and if they have an issue with it, come address it here the following week. I think that's an important component that we will be losing is that connection with the, with the residents who do want to understand what's going on and, and comment on it.
May I add something? I think you need to clarify this motion because it says agenda meetings. We haven't had agenda meetings in Pennsylvania for a long time. They're special meetings.
It would be a special, yeah, you're right.
Because I don't want, let's say this passes, then somebody's going to show up and say, that's not what you voted on. So will it's make it special meetings? Thank you.
So I just also want to point out, I had asked the borough manager and the agenda meetings cost about $600 in the evening for the solicitor and any other kind of stipends that occur.
That is correct. There's always soft costs involved.
Correct.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Well, I agree with Mr. Yeager's intent to keep the public informed because I think that's what we're here for. I also, but I, I also believe that in today's age, that most of, most if not every single one of our correspondence is, is all by email. And I don't know, we said that we would wait to think about this because we're all fairly new and learning, as just tonight was a perfect example. I had a lot of questions. I don't know that it should be immediate. I am all for one a month. I think that we can, I think it's doable. And I think it's doable without leaving the public out. But I mean, if, if the desire is to start it immediately, I'll probably go along with that. But I think maybe another month or so until we get more of our feet wet might be better.
And Mr. President, I would agree with Ms. Sherlock on that. I think that considering that most other burrows throughout the state have only one meeting and seem to get along fine without the special agenda meeting ahead of time and the far bigger towns and hours, because we're accustomed to this mode and because our residents are accustomed to this mode, I think we should consider phasing it out, but only gradually. I don't think we should do it immediately either. People are used to this right now. My problem with, with the special meeting and the regular meeting is that it's hard to tell which one is the important one. Usually all the actions at the agenda one, and then you come at the, the regular meeting, everything's already been decided. And right now we have this kind of, sometimes the, the hot issue is discussed at the agenda, sometimes it's at the, it's at the regular meeting. It'd be simpler if we consolidated it all into one meeting, but I don't think we're ready for that right, right now.
And I will remind everybody that the county only has one meeting a month and they have a far bigger budget and things to handle.
And Mr. President, if I might add, I think you and I discussed this earlier. You have presentations scheduled to appear before you at the March and April agenda meetings already. So if we are going to cancel those, which is fine by me, it may, due to conflicts and scheduling, push those presentations to a month or two later for you to hear them.
One last point, Mr. Parker?
I would like to get a thing in once or twice, but go ahead.
I agree that, that we shouldn't be coming to our regular meeting and have to add the motions and so forth. But because of, because of this transition, that's why it's happening. I don't think that's going to be in the future. But if you actually go back to last year's meetings, there were numerous times when things were added. So it's not, you know, it's not the norm, it's not what you want, but it does happen.
And actually, the last agenda meeting, the last week, there wasn't really much discussion at all.
I, once again, will ask the, the mover of this motion, since 11A failed, would you consider withdrawing this one until?
Should we just then amend the motion to say effective maybe in April?
Or May? Because you have an April presentation.
Who's the April presentation?
The auditors with the annual audit report.
Well, I don't, I don't really care if it's April or May, if, whatever the consensus with council is.
So is it okay to change the effective date to May 2020? Is that okay with you?
So the April one would be the last one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So the motion's been changed to a call for a motion to discontinue agenda meetings effective May 2020. Special meeting, sorry. Let me do that over again. We're right.
Just to be clear, you're not, just in the, into an interest of, of doing it by the books, you're still allowed to have a special meeting. You would be discontinuing the special meeting that is regularly scheduled for the purpose of setting the agenda.
We can hold.
Special meetings.
Yeah. You can call a special meeting.
But you cannot, just, just want that clear.
All right, we, we can call a special meeting with two days' notice.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, one more time. Call for a motion to discontinue special meetings used to set the agenda effective May 2020. We have a motion, we have the motion and a second. We've done, discussed this to death. Virginia, roll call please. No.
Council Driesbach?
No.
Council Malahal?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Paul?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Miss Sherlock?
Yes.
No.
Can I add, Scott? I don't want the residents to feel that they are being excluded. Is there a way to put the agenda up on the website so that people see it? So that they know what is going to be discussed?
Yeah, we post the agenda prior to the meeting.
Right, I just want to clear that up for the residents.
I'm sorry, Virginia, what was the vote count on that?
Five, three.
Five, three.
All right, 11E, call for a motion to terminate the employment of corporal pitcher effective immediately. I have a motion and a second.
Motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
We have it moved and seconded, discussion?
Mr. President, if we were to go through with this, should the motion be amended to read per the solicitor's advice that if we, if you were to be terminated, we escrow the salary until such time as his trial is over?
I don't want to speak for them, but neither the solicitor nor Labor Council felt that that was important to distinguish.
Okay, so this, they're aware that this motion was, was on the agenda?
They found out the same time I did, this afternoon.
Okay.
If I may. So this has obviously been a situation that's been going on for quite some time. We've been involved in it, we've been hearing the updates on it. You know, I'm not going to speak specifically about the case or the individual. What I will speak to is the advice that I received from, from council. And, and this is a general statement, is that a lot of times what will happen here is you'll, you'll terminate an officer and they will grieve it. Whether right, wrong or indifferent, they will grieve it and we have to pay to defend it. That's a concern. Not even discussing this case at all, whether, whatever the ruling is going to be, the ruling is going to be. The minute we terminate, we have to defend.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment and again, no specifics, I would never, because that's personnel exec stuff. I'd just like to commend the people that called this motion because this officer, and I'm not judging or anything like that, he has been getting a salary the whole time. So this would stop the, the salary.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
To that point, and we don't want to pay him his salary anymore because that seems to be, I mean, other than the fact that we believe that these were egregious acts, can we not have a motion to immediately stop the salary now? It's only, I don't know when his, I don't know if his court date, I don't have any. I mean, I know what was considered, but I don't know if it's going to be extended.
You.
But we're only talking 20-some days.
You're talking about withholding the salary? If you remember from.
That's worse.
It's worse. Just thought I'd ask, so that the people know.
What, what is worse? I'm sorry.
Taking, stopping a salary now after almost a year. But so that, you know, the public needs to know what we can, cannot do at this point.
Do we have an exact date? Is there any chance of having a continuance from that date?
There's always that.
I believe the date is March 24th.
Yeah, and as the lawyer up here, I can tell you that things do get continued. But that's not to say that March 24th very well could be the day that either there is a trial or a plea deal. There was a previous continuance, there can always be an additional one or it could, it could go on that day. So it's possible it could be resolved in the next, you know, month or so.
So, so he had a, a March 4th trial date or a March 9th that was earlier in the, in the month, was it not?
It was.
And now it's been, now it's been moved again to March 24th?
I actually never heard that date. I was provided that date by a member of council. I was always under the belief that it was March 24th.
It is March 9th.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Thank you, Dave.
Anyone else?
Is it the 24th or the 9th? The 9th.
Mr. President, I'd just like to make another comment real quick.
Sure.
We've heard this quite a bit over the last several years, but it's a menu of bad options. Whether, you know, one way or the other, my vote is going to reflect what I feel protects the borough the best.
Anyone else?
One comment, Mr. President. Enough is enough. We've been paying the sky since last July. We don't have a lot of money in this borough and we need, we need to spend it wisely. Last summer, I had several people talk to me when I was door knocking, when I came on to council. People up here on the council, they said, Scott, you know, it's, you're going to have to make some difficult decisions up there. And I said, I realize that. I've never been afraid to make a, a bold decision, to make a decision that wasn't popular, to make a decision that some people didn't like. So my vote with this is going to be how I feel. Sometimes, you know, you never know when you, Justin said it's a menu of bad options. When you have a menu of bad options, things can turn out bad. It's also a menu, could be a menu of good options too. So sometimes you just got to make, you got to go out on a limb and you got to make a decision that you believe in and that you truly believe will turn out to be the correct decision. If it wasn't for difficult decisions, they would, wouldn't be called decisions.
Anyone else?
Mr. Parker, just like to add to what Scott said, that's true. It's, it would be a bold decision, number one, decisions are hard and they're hard one way or the other. Yes or no, they're both hard decisions.
Just want to add one thing quickly. This has more to do with the actual incident that involved members of the public. There was other, I really want to skate this one really tight to the line, but there were other things that were violated that, that anyone else would have been terminated for earlier, so. No one else? We're going to have a roll call, Virginia, please.
Council Dowd?
No.
Council Driesbach?
No.
Council Malahal?
Yes.
Council Lynn Parker?
Yes.
Council Paul?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Miss Sherlock?
No.
Council Yeager?
No.
Can you make up a nomination?
Well.
What else?
No, I can, can I vote?
No.
Oh, no? Because it's, okay, I thought I could vote, but apparently I cannot.
Can you explain why?
Sure. As, like, most people know, but if you don't, the mayor, yeah, the mayor has control over the day-to-day operations or, or over, over the police. But as far as termination and things of that sort, that is specifically pursuant to the borough code, the purview of borough council and borough council alone. And that, that issue was researched by our firm when we saw that this was on the agenda, just to clarify. So the mayor has that, the power of, of certain things with, with police, but, but removal of an officer would be council.
So the motion fails as a tie. 11F, motion to, let me write this down. Motion to direct the borough manager to advertise for a part-time code enforcement. Say it another time, how you want me to say it?
Officer?
Yeah, do we need anything before that or just?
Yardley Borough calls it a coordinator, if you wanted to use that.
I think a, that's because their individuals also their emergency management coordinator.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So would it be officer? Code enforcement officer? I mean, they're, they are enforcing the law.
They're enforcing an officer, yes, it would be a part-time code enforcement officer.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President, do we have any job description for this part-time person? Do we know how many hours they're going to work, what they're going to be doing? Are they replacing the Keystone code enforcer? And I have a lot of questions about this and it seems we haven't touched on it much other than say Yardley has it. And last time I checked, Yardley is a much smaller borough with less population.
Actually, I, I did some researches on this as well and Bristol Township has a code enforcement inspector, maybe that's a better word. But they have. enforcement inspector. Maybe that's a better word. But they have a small paragraph, and it basically says that they're looking for a code enforcement inspector. The successful candidate shall have knowledge of successful strategies and practices for housing and property maintenance, code enforcement, international code council certification, and three years of proven professional inspection experience. They were looking for a $56,000 salary to start, but this was going to be for a full-time position.
Mr. Parker, don't we have that somewhere in our, well, maybe it's archives. That's probably not the best place to go. But I thought we already had a written description of actually all of our employees somewhere. They weren't done that long ago.
You needed that shot. It's yours.
Do we have a code enforcement?
In fact, it's probably in the ordinance.
Sorry? Do we have a job description?
We don't have them.
We might have one.
Sorry, Mr.?
Okay.
It would have to be up.
If I may, I think my biggest concern is voting on something without knowing what the pay rate is at all.
But we're not really hiring anyone, correct? We're just looking for resumes to see what is out there and what qualifications people have?
But once you advertise and give the borough manager permission, it's his hire, it's not ours.
Correct.
It's a code enforcement officer, not an appointment for the code official. Correct me if I'm wrong, Scott.
Counsel creates the position. The manager hires and fires.
We're not creating a position with this motion.
Well, you are, because this doesn't exist right now.
Well, we're just creating...
You can advertise a position that doesn't exist.
Can't you just do RFPs or something, then? There's got to be a way that you could advertise to get candidates to figure out who you want, or who you're interested in with that committee.
You can advertise anything. I mean, we can run ads, and if you decide, eh, we don't really like who we're hearing back from, you can always not create the position.
I think the purpose for this is to compare what's out there as an individual to better determine if we want to stick with a, you know, one-size-fits-all company. And if you don't know what's out there and what you can, you know, I don't know how you can compare the two.
I don't think, how do you advertise a position without offering compensation, without giving a range of compensation? It doesn't make any sense. It's premature.
I agree.
I think either we allocate budget for that, and until that point, I don't think we're in a position that we can, we can't just ask people to help us figure out whether we want to have a code enforcement officer or not.
I make a motion to table.
You have a motion to table? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second for a motion to table. Roll call, Virginia.
Well, you have two, I think you, I think you already have a motion to advertise it. So I believe you have two motions on the...
Okay.
And did we open up public comment for this edition?
No, we didn't.
We did not.
The tabling, I don't believe.
No, but for the original.
No.
For the original.
Okay. So maybe it would be better to withdraw it.
Yeah.
We can't, because we just had a motion to table it.
That's true.
Which supersedes the first one.
Those two folks have to untable.
Second, there wasn't a vote on it, though, right?
No, but you have a motion in place. So if you guys agree to withdraw your motion to table, then the original one can withdraw their motion.
I withdraw my second of the motion to table.
Fine, fine.
I am not doing this.
Can I open it up?
Wasn't it you two tabled? I mean, yeah.
I did, and Paul.
Is the motion to table withdrawn?
Is the motion to table withdrawn?
Yes.
The second is okay with that?
Absolutely.
All right. Is the original mover of the motion okay with withdrawing it?
Well, I was the original motion maker. As it stands, I understand that because there's no compensation listed, that this seems to be the sticking point. If there was compensation as part of the motion, is that something that, I mean, I have to take it away anyway, because no one likes the motion as it stands. So I can withdraw that motion, and Helen seconded it. That's up to her.
Actually, you know, when people advertise for jobs and for candidates, I know very few put their salaries in the advertisement.
They might do a range, but if you don't know what they're going to do...
Even with a range, like, there are lots of jobs I've applied to. I didn't know what the range was going to be.
Was it a full-time job or a part-time? Because part-time generally gives you an hourly figure.
It does.
Yeah.
And also indicates if there's any needed experience.
Which I think we could use the one that Helen used as an example.
Three years.
As part of that. Yes, the three years and accreditations and so forth. So, I mean, I don't think we're just going to put a one-liner out there, hey, here we are. I would think that it would be more specific.
Can you say, like, salary commiserates with experience?
All right, I have a...
Or a salary, I've seen them where they actually say your salary expectations to list, so.
I have a recommendation.
Negotiated. Salary negotiated.
I have a recommendation.
Okay.
If it's withdrawn, we can direct Scott to prepare a job description and a salary range, and to investigate it, and then we'll revisit it in the future. Is that okay with you?
Yes. I will withdraw.
Do I need a motion to direct him, or can we just? All right.
I think you just directed him, right?
I, did we just direct him?
I think you did.
All right, we're going to do a formal...
Okay, another motion.
Well, we need to open up public comment for that?
Well, let me make the motion first, and then we'll open it up.
Could you pass that to Scott? Thank you.
All right. Want me to direct you?
Just agreed to that.
However you would like. Counsel direct, you want me to flange together a quick motion for you? Counsel directs the borough manager to develop a job description with corresponding compensation for a part-time code enforcement officer to be advertised at a later date.
Are we going to open that up to public comment?
We need to move and second.
To move and second.
I move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Now we're going to open it up to public comment. Anybody wish to speak on the matter?
Jane Berger, I'm sorry, I didn't hear who the first and the second were. Thank you, Nancy.
Counselwoman Sherlock and Councilman Paul.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank counsel for withdrawing the other one and working on this one to work on a later date. What Ms. Halaho provided is a good starting point for the duties of this part-time code enforcement officer, sir, to make sure that they're relevant and limited within the scope of enforcement. So to know the education and experience, these are the qualifications of anyone to be considered, this is important. And I did hear some experience in Ms. Halaho, so what she'd read. I don't think any of you had it, but I didn't hear what an educational requirement might be. She said something about certifications, but I don't know which ones. So that you have the time to work on this and fully flesh it out is a positive step. But I'm glad counsel's considering that rather than the other motion.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Stephen Fowler. Live at 444 Hillside Avenue in Morrisville. I just wanted to make the comment, Mr. Mayor. The canal cleanup for April 4th is also the first day of trout season, and you're going to be losing some of your fishermen. And you're going to be probably annoying a lot of people if you're doing a canal cleanup at the same time that you're doing trout season.
I don't pick that date. The Friends of the Canal did. It's going to be the entire canal, from one end to the other. This has happened many times over the years. And, you know, they know, because everyone like you says, hey, do you realize it's opening day? I'm just letting people know to come out. And you're right, some fishermen are not happy to see us there.
It's going to have a lot of annoyed people.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Sure, thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the public? I'm going to close public comment. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I knew you were going to shoot me. Could we have the, could he read that one more time? Did he write it down?
I could, but I have to charge you for that.
I have motion to direct the borough manager to develop a job description?
Yeah, counsel motion, that's a motion to direct the borough manager to develop a job description and compensation, appropriate compensation for a part-time code enforcement officer position in-house to be advertised at a future date.
Okay, be advertised.
Anybody else?
Just for comments?
Yes.
Just want to comment, I like the process we're following here. I don't necessarily agree with the part-time code enforcer. I think we're putting, still even with a job description and salary, we're putting the cart before the horse, in that we haven't gotten any of the prospective professional services solicitations we're going to ask for. So how do we know we need a part-time guy? And what are they going to do? And will it have any effect on professional service solicitations we get? If they know we're hiring somebody part-time, are they not going to apply to the borough because they're going to lose that part of the business? Do they not split their business up? Questions I don't know the answers to, but...
All I can say is, we're not, we're just developing the job description. I think it would consider an overall view of the entire thing to decide. I mean, we may decide that we don't want to go in that direction. We may decide we do want to stick with...
I know, I just hate to see, you know, Scott spend his time doing all this research, and then we not do anything with it, sort of thing.
Mr. Parker?
I realize that.
How nice of you.
Mr. Parker?
But I do agree that it'd be good to have a bank.
I don't think we can, we can make a decision if we don't at least have that as an option to look at.
Right, it's a lot of pieces of the puzzle.
Right. And I think what we're trying to do is trying to decide how we want to stay.
Mr. Parker?
You've convinced me.
Is it me or the hour?
I can stay here all night.
I actually took off tomorrow, just because I knew. Go ahead, Mrs. Sherlock.
Do we know exactly how many hours that were dedicated strictly to code?
About 1,300 last year.
Yeah.
I do. Hold on, I put that away.
Strictly code, not anything else.
The average was 24 hours a week.
Okay, part-time hours.
Yeah, so code enforcement was point, like, if you did, hold on a second. Full-time equivalent code enforcement was .6 hours, but that also included the curb sidewalk program. So if you took that out, it would probably be a little less. It would probably be .5 hours, so half a person, which is why the part-time position.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, roll call, Virginia.
Councilor Allen?
Yes.
Councilor DeRisbon?
No.
Councilor Laugn?
Yes.
Councilor Parker?
Yes.
Councilor Paul?
Yes.
Councilor DeRisbon?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes 7-1. Is that everything?
Could there be more?
I, you never know. All right, 12 borough officials, please keep it short as possible.
I will. I'd just like to make an announcement, although that's, is that after borough officials?
Nope.
Just like to remind the public about the new voting booths, I mean, well, they're not, it's equipment, it's not a booth, that across the county, they are doing some sampling of that. And the first one, well, actually, there was one, I think, today at the county courthouse. But the next one is next Monday at the tech school from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and you'll get to sample it and see how it's used. I know that there's a schedule up on our channel. I don't know if it's on our website also, but there are probably 12 or 13 scheduled dates that the public can go and test them out. They're very different. It's very different than our past two ways of voting, so I would suggest that if you can get there, please do. Also, for March or April, we got it in our packet, the voting delegate is due by May 22nd, as well as the conference cutoff. And we want to do it before then, so that we're not paying any extra money.
Early bird special.
And also, I saw that there was a Blight and redevelopment fund grant where we can apply for up to $75,000. I think we should look at that. That's from the state. But I just happened to come across that. I'm done, Ted.
Actually, were you going to mention the school project with...
Oh, okay.
That we signed out last week.
I didn't write that down, so thank you. Everybody got the memo from the art teacher at the high school. Her name is Ms. Bauer. And the project that they're excited to do is to repaint the backdrop for the stage area. Some years ago, the school had done, what's down there now, the school has done. And over the years, our road crew have touched it up on occasion when there was graffiti. But they're very excited about doing this. I offered to donate the plywood. They're providing the paint. And it should be starting in about, maybe about a week and a half. And then they're going to, they'll send what the design is first. I mean, they're not just designing it and doing it without all of us to view it. So they'll be sending it for our approval. And then I would like to see, when it's done, that they could come back and we could actually, you know, commend them for it. It should be a class of only about 12 that's doing this. It's not her whole art class, as she explained it to me. Thank you, Scott.
Anyone else?
I do. I noticed that on Bridge Street, there were two new businesses that have opened up. One is the organic store, and another one is about to be opened. So I just want the residents to take a walk down Bridge Street and check them out.
Actually, I believe there's four.
Oh, four? Oh, well, I only saw the signs in the window, so I didn't see that.
Convenient Corner, which is Roger's Lock Shop. There's an auto detailing place across the street from that, which used to be Fletcher's Garage. And there's a new hair place opening next to, is it Anthem Flags? Used to be Cotay Flags. And the one you referenced right here on the corner here, yes.
Yeah, that one looks good. I'm going to check it out myself. But I also, because I saw those, and I was happy to see that there's different types of businesses coming in, I did some research on zoning and land use standards for smoke shops and tobacco stores. I tried to go on our borough code, and I couldn't find that we had anything, any kind of ordinances. Do you know offhand if we do?
Specifically for...
Well, this one, this one town passed this ordinance, and it basically says that, it talks about tobacco stores shall not be located within 300 feet measured property line to property line from a school, family daycare, child facility, youth center, community center, rec center, park, church, religious hospital, or other place where children regularly gather. And then one of the other ones was that smoke shops and tobacco stores shall not be located within 500 feet measured property line to property line from another smoke shop and tobacco store. So I was wondering if we had anything, and if we could start looking into passing something like this.
Yes, there is something in the zoning ordinance. I'm not sure if it's as detailed as you reference. As counsel might remember, we're going through a 10-year update to the comprehensive plan, which hopefully will be finished up in a couple of months. The usual, natural next step to that is usually an update to the zoning ordinance.
Okay, great.
So, but if, you can certainly introduce specific legislation to either amend the zoning ordinance to provide for that, or to adopt a separate standalone ordinance for that, or you can wait and, you know, and give your input as part of the update of the zoning ordinance.
I thought the zoning ordinance put some restrictions on, I don't know if it does, right?
I'm not sure if it gets as specific as...
Yeah, I didn't see, I didn't see what you're referencing, so I'll go look into it. But it'll, this at least gives people on counsel a chance to think about it, and then maybe we can make some adjustments.
Yep.
So that's just to put out there for everyone.
I have two quick comments. First one on the business... First one on the businesses. I have a pending request in to Scott to brainstorm a way for counsel to be kept updated on when new business is open. Currently, counsel receives no information about new businesses opening up unless we happen to drive by and see it. So I know he's brainstorming in the back of his mind how to get us that information to keep us aware of new businesses that open.
Yeah, it's very difficult to do, because the permit process is not a reliable indicator, because somebody can apply for a permit and not open for another month or two. So unless a new business, you know, advertises or makes it known that they're having a grand opening, or a reopening, or whatever the case might be, we don't always know when that's happening either. But I haven't given up on trying to figure out a way to make it easier. In fact, perhaps our friends at the Business Association could endeavor to assist us along this line.
If they even know.
Because if you're a business in Morrisville, you should certainly belong to the Morrisville Business Association. The benefits and amenities of such membership are overwhelming, so.
And my second comment was, Annie had reached out to me about, she had dropped something off here, knew that something was dropped off about some sort of, I think it was either a litter contest or something. She said she dropped it off the Borough, had it, I don't think I've seen it in the packet yet, so if we don't have it, can you make sure you dig for it and send it out?
She's supposed to be getting back to me with a second part to what she already gave me. The first part that she gave me is on our Facebook page and is on public portal on the website. I've not seen, I don't think I've seen the second part yet, which is still to come. There's a part two.
Was the first part sent to us? Or are you saying the second part may be this contest that you're still?
Well, she did mention that to me. I haven't seen all the particulars of that yet. I think she's working out the details. So until I have it in writing, I'm not going to.
I will speak to her, because you, my conversation with her was that you had it, so somewhere there's been a communication.
I have the first part, not the second part. Unless it came in today, and I haven't seen it yet, I'll qualify my remarks with that.
Mr. Parker, just wanted to add to Scott's comment with regards to permitting. We have a permit for a, where the old food market was on Bridge Street, across from what's now Anthony's, and that was two years, and they still have it open yet. That's for the pawn shop. We can't wait.
We're hoping they're having second thoughts.
Seems like they're tidying up more, maybe if they go to sell, they'll make more money, I don't know.
Anybody else?
Make that motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
If you guys want to do a four to four. I promise I'm very good.